City Council Committee on Financial Health, a call to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cadine?
Here.
Leon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
LaBelle LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Talitier?
Yeah.
Mara?
Here.
President Ponti? Here, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda is citizens' input. First person assigned to speak is Jason Burns, 62, I want to say 2, Valentine Street, Fall River, regarding fire department buyback update. Couldn't read your handwriting, Mr. Burns, but...
Thank you, Counselor, President Ponti, for allowing us to sit down here. Thank you to all the counselors. I have with me Tom Chippendale. The reason why I brought him down with me, I wanted to first probably start with something that doesn't happen often down here, is to thank his body, to thank specific counselors.
I have a question here.
Can you take my ear off, click?
If the people in the back, if they can turn the volume up inside a chair or somewhere to hear that.
Much better, all right.
Thank you.
Just wanted to come down here. I brought down Tom Chippendale, actually happens to be the father of Paul Chippendale. For those who don't know, City Council was lit up in green yesterday in honor of Paul Chippendale, which to me was an incredibly kind gesture. It meant a lot to me. It meant a lot to our firefighters. You don't get thanked a lot. You get pointed out when you do things incorrectly or things that we disagree with and he has an opportunity, I can say thank you. Paul was an incredible fighter, fighter, a better man, an even better husband and father, and we miss him dearly and just that gesture that you did yesterday meant so much to us. And I just wanted to give an opportunity to bring Tom down here to also thank you. It means a lot to our entire firefighter family. Do you mind if I pass him like to Tom?
I definitely would like to thank you for that gesture. It meant a lot to my family also. I mean, he loved the job and it really means a lot. Thanks.
So, building off of that, yesterday was actually the seventh anniversary of Paul's passing. Paul was a 37-year-old. I call him a kid. It's just kind of, I guess, my background. He's a 37-year-old kid when he passed away. He had a wife and two kids. So yesterday was the seventh anniversary. One of the other reasons why I'm down here before you is there's a resolution later about a cancer screening process. Just as quickly as I can, I know what time it's here, cancer is now the leading cause of firefighter death. 61 percent of all of the...
Excuse me, President, motion to waive the rules for three minutes.
Motion made by Council Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Council Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have your... Have all the time you need, Mr. Burns.
Thank you. I'll still make it quick, but nice to not have the pressure. So, cancer is the leading cause of death, for line-of-duty deaths for firefighters. It is ravaging our work profession. And we've tried to use Paul's passing as a catalyst to create change in our department. And you guys have been a part of that. We've bought brand-new SEVAs. You guys have purchased brand-new gear for my firefighters. We have what we call gear washers and extractors and dryers in each station. We put, which is really inexpensive, but incredibly powerful, we have these decontamination kits on the apparatus. They basically help us wash off on scene after a fire. Just doing that gets rid of 85 percent of the carcinogens, right? So we're doing a lot of things to try to help cancer, prevent cancer from our membership. And this is just another way, this cancer screening process, it sounds hokey, done by the dogs. They have a dog screening process, but they're actually, they have a 94 percent accuracy rate when they hit on. So we breathe into mass for 15 minutes. We send it back to them. They have a series of dogs who are trained to smell out. I don't know if it's enzymes. I don't want to give you the wrong terminology, but they have a 94 percent accuracy rate. Sometimes they hit on precancerous cells before even a doctor with a blood test could tell you that you had cancer. These dogs were already telling you that we got something going on here. And in that case, you continue to go see your doctor and you stay on top of it. And early prevention is a key, and that is the other level of what we're doing here. You're going to save lives by catching cancer early. It's bound to happen in our job. It's part of what it is. I'm not here singing you a sad song. I get it. Cancer's part of it. But if we can do anything as a group here to kind of prevent it, catch it early and keep people alive, it's... So I'm asking if we can get your support on that timing. It couldn't be anymore, you know, with Paul's anniversary yesterday and this being on the agenda today. It's just, it's powerful for me. This is what we're using to make the department a better place for our firefighters. So I'd ask you support on that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If you don't, I also have an update afterwards on the vet buyback issue that I came down here about nine months ago.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Union President Burns, thank you for coming. Question, roughly, best of your knowledge, how many Fall River firefighters have suffered with cancer, passed away, went into remission, and went back to work in total?
I have a list on my phone right now, and we're still building that list. So reporting has never really been good, right? We're getting better at that now, but I have about 40 guys right now. I think I can get up to 50 in a pretty easy...
Okay.
Tom worked 27 years with us.
My career has been 29 guys that I know of with cancer, six passed away on the job.
Yeah. I asked that question because I was aware of the numbers. I just wanted to go public. It's a travesty. It really is. With that being said, the proactiveness is what needs to be done. And I commend you for coming down here and speaking to us about it. Appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. In seat five, Counselor Lee.
There's cost-saving measures as well as a part of this because if you're too late on a cancer screening...
Exactly. I think that's a huge, huge bonus for the citizens of Fall River. So there's an upfront cost of $30 per kit. I have just short of 200 guys. Not everyone is going to participate, as crazy as that sounds to you. Not everyone wants to know if they have something, right? So it's open to everybody. If they take you up on the offer, they're going to do it. Treating a guy with cancer, depending on the cancer, could cost you anywhere from $400,000 to $800,000, right? It's remarkable what it costs. And you can imagine if you can catch it early, you're going to spend a hell of a lot less, right?
Healthcare in general, if you're able to keep up preventative maintenance, then the costs are going to come down.
So saving lives is awesome. That's our goal, right? But if we can do it in a cost-effective, you know, responsible manner, that's just better for everybody.
I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Mr. Burns, you can continue with your other update.
Just, I was down here not too long ago, and we were looking for a home rule petition, re-opener of a period of time where our veterans who didn't indicate that they were going to buy back their veterans' time. You have 180 days once you get on the job. There's a lot going on when you get the job. They're handing you all kinds of paperwork. You've got to sign everything. There's a lot of pressure. At the time firefighters had to, we used to buy our own gear, our own protective equipment. If they never indicated on a piece of paper that they were willing to buy back their military time, there's no other period where they can come back to buy it. And basically, they can use that towards their retirement time. It's a problem statewide. That's why I came down here to tell you. We're working on a state-level issue. So my update to you is, we included everybody in Fall River, which was fantastic. The veterans can all participate. Roughly about four months after Fall River filed their home rule petition, unanimous home rule petition at the state level, PEREC filed some legislation to fix it on a statewide level. I'm thrilled with that. Short-term disappointment, we got a slowdown for Fall River's bill. And I get it, but I'm concerned that people in Fall River who we've all unanimously said we want to take care of and make sure those veterans get that benefit could be curtailed a little bit or miss some of the benefit if it takes too long at the State House. And sometimes the State House could have some issues drag along. So that's the update. I'm here for any questions on that as well.
Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any communities filed similar legislation with the state that's already been approved?
Yes.
Or were we in the alliance?
There's probably a half a dozen total that have been approved over different periods of time, long periods of time. And what they're basically saying is they want to put a cap on that right now. They don't want to have, you know, all these other systems in place. And what I'll tell you is, which kind of is confusing to me, not really confusing, but frustrating, the state fix actually exceeds what Fall River's fix is, right? So we were looking at a short window to say, hey, everybody, if you have that and you want to purchase it back, you have, say, six months. I forgot the exact timeframe. The state ruling that PEREC has filed is going to be you have until you're vested to sign, to indicate that you're going to buy it back. That's 10 years. So it's far and away surpasses Fall River's fix. So I don't know why they wouldn't... I get it. Sometimes there's a song and dance that goes down with legislation, so.
Well, thanks for bringing it up. I know it's important to you and your membership. And yeah, whatever we can do to try to speed it up. It's a no-brainer. When it was explained to me last time around when I said, "Oh," so thank you.
And just reiterate, it's for every city employee. Certainly, I'm here in, you know, representation of my membership, but thankfully, it's for every city employee who's a veteran.
Yep. When you serve in time, you serve in your country. You come back, I mean, it should be automatic, right?
I agree.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President LeBeau.
Thank you. I'm just going to speak on this now because you're here. And this is going to be after the agenda, and I'm not sure how late that will go. As far as the home rule petition, it is still sitting in the Committee on Public Service. I did have several conversations with you last week, as well as Senator Roderick's, on where the bill is. That PEREC has filed a companion bill, and so ours is waiting. However, PEREC's bill may or may not ever get passed. So I don't see it as an issue. We voted unanimously for it, for a Fall city employee fix. What Falls were asking to do here is for the city councilor and the mayor to send a joint letter to our state delegation requesting that they do everything that they can do in any of their committees to push the Fall River one through. Or if not, see the PEREC one through quickly because we have people that this is going to start to affect calendar-wise. And as far as the cancer dogs, we spoke about that as well. I know I have the information for it. I can share it with the counselors as well. It's pretty thick, but it explains how it works. You're right, it is only $30, and we don't know that everybody will participate, but we're talking maybe $5,000 total if everybody does. And it's a huge cost savings versus if we, you know, or if somebody finds it down the line. And Mr. Chippendale, I am very sorry for your loss and what we did last night. I know that it meant a lot to you. It meant a lot to us to do that. And I need to commend Counselor Peckham for bringing that to my attention. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Very none. Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Just a comment. I know this council and prior councils has done their very best to continue to support the fire department in any way we can. And I know that this council is equipped to do the same, so we look forward to continuing to work with you as well. Thank you. Next person to stand up to speak is Erica Scott Pacheco, 1510 Highland Avenue. I believe that says saving and recycling. Is that what that...
Saving money and recycling.
Saving money and recycling.
Yeah. We must have went to the same handwriting school.
Probably.
It's Mr. Burns. Thank you, Council President Ponti. My name's Erica Scott Pacheco. I reside at 1510 Highland Ave. And I'm here today because, like many of you, I'm very passionate about our environment and also about saving money for the voters and the residents of Fall River. So although we've now gotten rid of the purple bags, we still are faced with the other half of the solid waste disposal issue. And the flip side of that coin is recycling. Our recycling historically for many years has been very contaminated. And by that, I mean that people are either deliberately or by accident putting in items that can't be recycled. Now, last year, I researched this and found that I myself was often accidentally contaminating my recycling. If you have an empty water bottle, a Poland Spring bottle, you can't recycle it with the plastic lid. You have to take the lid off, put the lid in the trash, and then you recycle the bottle. If you have Chinese food takeout, oftentimes the bottom container is black and the top is clear. You cannot recycle the black plastic. You can recycle the clear lid. Additionally, people are often still confused about pizza boxes. You can't recycle pizza boxes if they have any kind of grease on them. Now, then there's also the issue of people just throwing things in the recycling and not caring. That issue we can't really do about, but we can be proactive about educating our residents who are trying to do the right thing, trying to recycle, and inadvertently contaminating the recycling. So you probably wonder, what happens when it's contaminated? Well, we have to actually pay a fee, so it's extra money, and then it gets thrown away. So it's bad for the environment and it's bad for our bottom line. It creates extra charges. That's money that's being allocated that could be going towards the firefighters. It could be going towards fixing our roads. It could be going to our schools. But we're having to put these extra fees just because people don't know often they're recycling. And so I really think it's important that we address this head-on. I heard on SAR about a week ago, which is the reason I'm here, I heard DCM Director Mr. Perry talking about educating kids in the schools. He was saying that these are the kids right now, you know, they're children, and then they grow up to be adults, and they're going to be doing recycling. Absolutely, there has to be education in their schools. We can't wait for those kids to grow up. Because right now, people like you and me are recycling, and we're not educated about it. So the solution that I really think the city should pursue is doing a mailing to all of the houses with do's and don'ts. We also could hand out a do's and don't sticker to put on the recycling bins. When people get a little flag from DCM saying, "We didn't pick up your trash," or "You're recycling because it was contaminated," all they're getting now is like a little, you know, oops sticker. We could put a do's and don't sticker so the people could actually learn. And that'll save us money. It'll save the environment, and it'll help make sure that people know how to recycle properly.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Ms. Scott, good information. And the last council meeting that we had, Mr. Perry also described why our recycling is, and I wrote it down because it was such a big number, 135 per ton. And part of the main reason being is that it was because of contaminated recycling. So it's a good idea. Future council meetings or future environmental affairs meetings, we will be discussing that. And I welcome your ideas to come to the table.
Yeah. I came today because I hadn't seen one of those scheduled yet, but I do know that the city is trying to address it. And I think that addition to starting young with kids, we really have to do something now to cut down on that number because it should not be that high.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I remember when we first started the purple bags and the recycling issue, there was a mailer sent out by the city of Fall River, and it had the do's or don'ts of what to recycle, what not to recycle. And I remember my daughter's mom took it and taped it to the wall above the recycling bin. So when my daughter or my older two kids would go to recycle something, they could look at it, see if it was recyclable, and put it in. Do you maybe recommend something along those lines?
I think so, because just in talking to people over the last year in the community, a lot of people don't know the do's and don'ts. I didn't know the do's and don'ts. I think most people are really shocked, especially about water bottles, which are probably one of the most commonly recycled items. And a lot of people are contaminating it just by accident. You finish the water bottle, you put the lid on it, and you recycle the whole thing. So like your bottle there, you couldn't recycle it like that. That would contaminate it.
So it would be the cap that would be...
Correct. The cap you can't recycle.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
I'm not real sure about that. What I'm sure about is that the cap needs to be on the bottle. The cap can't be thrown into the recycling bin and then the bottle thrown in. That the cap needs to be on it. So I'm not sure about that. I've heard both sides of that. I've heard that the caps get stuck in machinery, just like plastic bags did. But what I will say is that the mayor hasn't been in office that long. He does have a transition team. One of the transition teams that he put together was for the recycling. I've talked to a few people that are on that team, and some of the things that you're saying is some of the things that they've brought up. And I think that Mr. Perry is absolutely right. We start with all of the schools. And when we did the recycling, that should have been part of it. That was part of the state plan, that you do education. But also utilizing our cable TV, our government access channel, to do that. And if we are a multicultural community, I think that we also have to have that same program put out in different languages so that everyone gets to understand what is to be recycled and what isn't. Over time, certain items have changed, too, that you can't recycle... There's numbers on every bottle. If it's a number one, or a number two, or a number three, what can be recycled and what can't be recycled. And it's basically making sure that people get educated because it is costing us a lot of money. And every time we talk about recycling, Erica, I go crazy. Because years ago, Casella came in. They were going to build a plant here. They were going to take our recyclables for 20 years for free, and I couldn't get a second on the council. And you know where we bring our recyclables? To Casella, out of the city. So recycling is a very sore spot for me. But I think you're right, that there needs to be a lot of education on it. But I would say, please give Mayor Coogan a little bit of time and listen to the transition team because a lot of what you're saying is things that they've talked about as well. But thank you so much for coming down. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're entirely right that there is a lack of clarity. And I just this morning was looking online on Fall River Mass, our website, at fallriverma.org. There's a PDF you can download that says one thing. There's a list on the actual Fall River Make It Here website that says another. And so there's really like not consistent information about the caps and about other items. One of them says you can do aluminum foil. One says, you know, one is silent aluminum foil. And so it is important that we have the most updated information from the company itself. And I was also researching, like you mentioned, right? There's about 12, there's about a dozen sites in this state where all of our recycling goes to. Because I was trying to figure out, where does this actually go? We hear on the news that, you know, China's not taking our recycling. Where does Massachusetts recycling go? There are some cities in Boston that actually are making a profit because they've done, like north of Boston, they've done such a great job at taking the amount of the contamination down to like below 10 percent, that they are making a profit. So one of the reasons that we hear in the news a lot that recycling, there's no market for it, it's not just about China. It's about China's not taking contaminated recycling. And so if we can get the contamination down by educating people in, you know, multilingual approaches, then that actually might help us generate revenue. At the very least, it's going to save money because we won't be paying a fee and paying more per ton for the contamination that we do now.
I yield, Mr. President.
Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President LeBeau.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. You are always so well-spoken and informative. You said two things that I didn't know, and I try and do my best to recycle. I did not know about the caps. I throw out water bottles all the time. And then I did not know about the bottom of the Chinese food container. And I also order from Chinese sales all the time. So that's a problem. I agree with Counselor Pereira. We are just getting started, but I would advocate that you maybe work to put a resolution in with Counsel Lee, get his committee. And I cannot remember if, when Mr. Perry was in front of us, if you said already you were going to bring that to your committee to have the discussion on that.
We're going to be... I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Lee, go ahead.
It's definitely one of the top things we want to definitely talk about.
And I was happy that he was going to head that committee because I know that he shares the same passion on environmental issues.
Reducing in general, just reducing waste in general is going to be one of the top priorities, so.
And as far as the website, you are correct. I am not a fan at all of the city website. There is all kinds of missing information, misinformation. I'm not a fan. I think it needs to be restructured completely.
We've all seen it.
Yeah, it's bad. It's bad. And it's been bad. And it's a really big pet peeve of mine. But you are right again. As far as the kids, I find my kids are already learning more in school and just in general, growing up in this time. And it's the adults that need to be made more aware. They're learning it as part of their daily studies, even if they don't have a specific plan from the city going in. They're learning it and what they're doing already. So something out to the residents needs to be addressed. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor...
Thank you. I'm just checking my bottle out. And it says, "Empty and replace cap." So I think Linda, you must be right.
I was right.
It's right on the bottle, so you must be right.
Call my husband and tell him. He never thinks I'm right.
With that, I yield, that's all.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deah.
Yeah, I think you're correct. They do need a list. Because if I'm not mistaken, most plastic containers, if you look at the bottom of the container, they have numbers on them. One, two, or five for sure. I don't know if it goes higher. And I think people aren't aware that the higher numbers aren't recyclable. The lower numbers are. And that also would help in determining what you should and shouldn't put in the recycle bin. So I think you're very correct in thinking that there should be a list to inform people. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Le...
Ken Pacheco, back when he was running DCM, he used to go on WSAR Fridays. And he would go on for about a half hour talking about all the specific things that you had to do for recycling, for all that. So there was an effort. But as Counselor in seat eight said, I don't think it was comprehensive enough at the time. So that's what we have to work on for the future, is to be more comprehensive and educational about this process. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Very none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you also.
That will conclude citizens' input. Next item on our agenda is a loan order for $2.1 million for the purchase of snow removal equipment. It's also on our agenda as well. It's for discussion only in the Committee on Finance. Madam City Administrator, Mr. Perry? If you could just give us a highlight. I know there was a clerical error on this. Is this the item that we had at a prior council meeting? Madam City Administrator?
Yes, Council President. The $2.1 million was in front of you quite some time ago, and there was a mistake with regard to whether or not an emergency preamble was needed during that particular evening. It was brought to our attention when we went to borrow on it just a couple of weeks ago. And bond counsel asked us to go through the paperwork again so there would be no issues with regard to borrowing the $2.1 million. And Mr. Perry's actually already ordered the trucks with regard to this bond authorization. So we're looking for the council's support to vote this order again.
Mr. Perry, I know Counselor in seat one had the question at the last meeting. If you can just reiterate, the trucks ordered in, where are they at with the ordering process?
Trucks are ordered. Trucks are ordered, counselors. Being manufactured as we speak, I confirmed with the vendor today that the first two will be in this Thursday, day after tomorrow, and then six there, very shortly thereafter. There are a total of 14 trucks on this order. So hopefully, within the next week and a half, we will have the first eight of that order in and ready to go.
And what are we doing with these trucks when it's not snowing?
Some of them are multipurpose, so I bought three of them that will have dump bodies. So we will remove the salters in the spring and in the fall and summer. We will use those for our concrete and asphalt crews. And then the rest of them, they will be housed, serviced, and housed for those months and only used for the winter seasons.
Fair enough. Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Mr. Perry, I'm not against purchasing the equipment. I know that it's needed. Mr. Perry, I'm not against purchasing the equipment. I know that it's needed. My main concern is the taxpayers spend all this money on equipment, and I hate to see any piece of equipment being kept outside. I mean, we even had the trolley that was left outside, and luckily, we're going to be having it repaired, but refurbished or what have you. But what can we do down there at DCM to clean out that garage and to be able to park things in there appropriately? There's some stuff that's there that I don't know who put it there. I mean, you know I swing by DPW often. There's some stuff that shouldn't even be there. Is there a way that you can do that? Or is that something that you need to talk to this council about, or to the administration about, expanding that? You know, the footprint of the garage down there? We need to keep things... I mean, it's not only you. The park department, I mean, the cemetery department is the same thing. All the new equipment we have, all the new trucks, they're all outside on Bullock Street. There's a foundation that they poured years ago for a shed or a garage that they never built. That's a concern of mine. So if I'm going to vote on this, which I am, but to vote on this, I just caution you that the concern I have is we don't want to spend money on stuff and keep it outside. A car that's garage probably lasts longer than one that's out, you know, out in the elements. Do you have any ideas on that, how we can maneuver things there?
I can certainly understand your concern with that, Counselor. I agree. Ideally, it's not best to leave your equipment outside in the elements year round. Unfortunately, at this point at our facility, we have utilized one half of the two garages that we had where we used to pack, park all of the packers, the trash trucks that we had. Those garages at one point were completely empty, and they were only used for housing the trash trucks. So we fit at one point, I believe it was 16 of them in there. Since those have been sold and we're no longer in that business, we've utilized one half of that garage for what hopefully someday could possibly become a centralized garage. I know some of you have been on the council for a while. I've heard that idea. So we've put in new lifts, upgraded our mechanics' equipment, got them out of what is an antiquated mechanic shop in the basement with the traditional pits that you would have to climb into years ago. Those are no longer safe for the mechanics to be in and operating in. So that centralized, hopefully centralized garage idea is starting to become a reality. And our mechanics, at the very least, are working in a much better facility. With that said, everything that was on that side had to be moved to the other side. And now we store most of the more sensitive things that we need for DPW in that secondary garage. We also have our brine unit, the brine machine that we make the brine solution for the roadways during the winter. That is in one of the corners of that secondary garage. And then we have our masonry tools, our asphalt equipment. You're right, there are some things that don't seem like they would be something that would be stored at DPW. But DPW traditionally has always been, I don't want to say dumping ground, but it has been the storage area for surplus property, for other city departments, for ourselves as well. It can be organized, I believe, to fit more equipment than we currently have, and we can work on doing that. And I also have some ideas about the area where we currently have the recycling up top that hopefully in the near future I can realize that idea. I don't want to get too far down that road because it's not something I can guarantee. But I'd like to see inevitably that area with those garage doors up top near the office used for storage. We've worked on those garage doors. We have them, two of the four functioning now. So we would be able to get equipment in and out of there fairly easy. So that's another spot that I was looking at. And we also have a temporary space building that we had bought about four years ago. I believe it's 60 by 80. It would need to have a foundation laid, and then we would be able to put that up. That's another idea that I've also thought about. So I mean, it's nothing that I haven't thought about, and I agree, we need to find a solution to that. But hopefully, in the near future, another thing that we'll be looking at is a possible transfer or DPW facility, which is sorely needed. So I mean, without, again, going too far down that road, because that's a whole nother conversation. That's not what we're here for tonight. I hear your concern, and I will do everything I can to make sure as much of that equipment is housed indoors as possible.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Can we have an auction and get rid of all the ambulances and fire trucks and cars? Can you just ship them up to Mid-City? Will they buy them from us?
So most of that...
It's a little bit of money.
Most of that surplus property is listed online. It's not moving, no, and some of it's been sitting there for years. I mean, you'd probably have to move some brush to see some of the stuff that's back there. But yeah, that's something that the administration and myself have discussed. And if it doesn't move in the near future, we will get rid of it for scrap if necessary.
Well, I will tell you that I, for one, would look at spending money on giving you more of a facility there because anybody that goes to that facility, it should look professional.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that's something that you probably should be discussing with the administration, but I would certainly support.
I appreciate that.
To see that being done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I yield, Mr. President.
Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
I just want to echo some things that Counselor in seat eight said. I'm going to vote for the equipment. I know that it's needed, but to leave it out in the elements year round is definitely a concern. I was just told that perhaps there was a ladder truck that's been out behind the fire building, the administration building, and we might have a problem with that. So I don't mind spending money on the equipment needed, but if we have these different possibilities, I would like to see one of those come forward. If you need a counselor to work with you on that, I'm happy to do so, to get it in front of the council. But I don't want to see any equipment that we're spending money on be left in the elements, and then we have issues in it, and it's just a waste of money all the way around. If you have a space building and we have a foundation somewhere, or if it's not the right one, if there's room at DCM, or whatever we have to do, I think we need to make that a priority for the equipment that we're buying. And I know that Mary wrote that down. She's going to check on that ladder truck.
I am.
Ayew, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I'm going to echo what both of my colleagues have stated. My father worked for the DPW back then, 20 some odd years. And I was lucky enough a few weeks ago to take a tour
I heard.
of your facility. And last time I was there, I was probably seven or eight years old, maybe nine. It hasn't changed.
No.
It looks identical to when my dad worked there. When Counsel Perera stated that a new facility... If we're going to be spending money like this on vehicles and equipment, it should be stored correctly. I went in there and it was like I was nine years old again. The offices in the same spot, the scale house, the dumpsters. And I noticed that all the vehicles, for the most part, were being housed outside on the eastern end of the parking lot, which the weather we have in England isn't a good thing. If we're going to spend money like this on vehicles, we should definitely look into protecting them. With that, Ayew.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, what would it take, footage, 100 by 100, 200 by 400, to house everything?
I mean, that's... I'd be throwing out a guess, Counselor.
Well, how big is that, the incinerator?
That area that I was speaking about, I'd say that's 40 by, I believe when we paved that, it was 40 by 90, 40 by 95.
So if you had something 100 by 200, that'd be more insufficient?
I'd say that would definitely get us close.
You know, I see all these commercials about metal buildings. They put it up. It seems to be reasonable. You know, you hook up a few lights, this, that, and the whole thing. You know, if you're spending this kind of money, you're absolutely right. We like to protect it. And if you've got a piece of land that's big enough, what's it going to cost? $300,000, maybe?
So I would, again, I would point to something Counselor in seat eight had said earlier about the transition. So obviously, you know, this administration is going to get their reports. They're going to review them. Everybody's going to decide what the best direction for the city to head in would be. And I would say, once we have that direction and we know where we're going with the DPW and all of the other departments, I would say then it'd be time for us, the council, myself, and our departments to sit down and say, okay, where do we go? What do we need? If we're not going to realize a DPW or transfer station in the next coming years, I would say we definitely need to look at investing some money, such as you're saying, into a building like that. But I would like to see them get a chance to be able to decide what direction they're going to take us in, and then we can see what our best options are at that point. I wouldn't want to spend a few hundred thousand dollars, even though the benefit that we would reap from spending that and housing the equipment is definitely warranted if we're just going to have it be something that's outdated because we have a new facility in a few years. So if we're going to look at a facility in the short term, maybe there are some other cheaper solutions that we can look at now. But if we're not going to realize a facility in the short term, maybe then we need to think about spending some significant money. And to Counselor in seat six's point, you're right. You know, it is the same. I started 20 years ago, and it's the same as when I started. Sometimes nostalgia is a positive thing. It brings you back to a time where you're fond of. But in this situation, this nostalgia kind of reminds you that unless we, unless... And it's a serious point. Unless we continue to invest in our facilities, in our equipment, in our departments, this is what you end up with. And it's gone a significant number of years without an investment in that property. There are very, you know, small things that we've done over the years to keep ourselves up and running. But the time has come now where we need to seriously look at that facility, our DPW, what we're housed in, and what we can do to be more efficient, more professional. As you said, Counselor, when people drive in, they're coming into a top-notch facility, much like you'd see in some of the other communities that you go to with their DPW facilities. I think my guys deserve it. I think it would boost morale. But again, I'm anxious and hopeful to see what direction this administration's going to take us in. And once we see that, then I think we're going to have some of the answers you councils are looking for.
Probably been a good idea if you put it in the five-year plan.
I believe, I believe we did, yeah.
We did. It's in year five.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I didn't see it. Must have missed it. Ayew.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I just make a recommendation?
Sure.
The item on the agenda is just the purchase of the snow removal equipment. So I know everybody's passionate about the building itself, but under priority matters, in full session, full council, we have a five-year capital improvement plan, which is going to be referred to FinCom. So finance is going to be talking about it next meeting, so if we could just kind of hold off.
Let's... Thank you, Counselor, for the point of information. Let's stick to the snow removal items instead of that. I'd accept that from the Counselor in seat one. Anything further regarding the resolution? Fair enough. Anything further from the Council? Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Mr. Perry, just a quick question on maintenance and repair.
Sure.
When you see a purchase, you know, coming down the line, and you have a total amount of money that you see coming, do you normally... Is your process where you normally allot money to decide for repairs? Or is it something that you just wait as it comes?
In this particular loan order, we purchased the vehicles and parts and supplies to go with them. These are vehicles we don't have currently. So as opposed to having to buy everything out of our operating budget, I ordered extra shearing pins, cutting edges, blade parts, things like that.
So you are thinking ahead a little bit on that?
Correct. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Ayew.
Anything further on this item? Perry, none?
I will wait.
That will conclude the discussion on item two. Item three is a loan order for $2.219 for street repair that was referred back to this Committee on Finance on the 28th of 2020. Item is also listed on the agenda. Any discussion on this? Our city engineer is down. If you can give us a brief update from your point of view on where we're at with this, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. So it's part of our planning process. Right now, we are moving forward with planning for the 2020 construction contract. And at this time, it would include money that is budgeted in the capital expenditures, $2 million. It would include this funding, $2.1 million, as well as Chapter 90, which we anticipate being about $1.9 million, assuming level funding from the state. So that would give us approximately $6 million for this year's work and about $3.9 million going forward. That is going to allow us to accomplish a significant amount of additional street work that we haven't been able to do in the past. We are looking at the possibility of doing one or two larger corridor projects, taking care of some of our thoroughfares. But we're also approaching it from the standpoint that we want to have this money be of broad impact across the entire city so that it would not be localized in just one region. And it's going to be targeted towards streets that are in disrepair. We're also working and coordinating these efforts with the utility department and with Liberty Utilities to make sure that we are not paving roads where they anticipate needing to put utilities in in two years. They've agreed to work with us. Liberty Utilities is actually moving their capital improvement schedule up so that they can get more pipe in the ground ahead of our work.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
That $2.2 million, is that part of the street scape money that we did?
It is. So Counsel, just to remind everyone, you rescinded North Main Street and Rock Street. And what the administration did was we have in front of you a loan order to supplement the Chapter 90 for the $2.219, which is the sum total of North Main and Rock Street. And it's the administration's view that we would like to, as J.R. just pointed out, spread those projects among all parts of the city where there's roads in disrepair.
Who's calling the shots?
Um, it's...
That's me.
It's a group effort, Counsel.
It's a group effort, yes.
So the list coming down from you and the mayor?
And so...
I provide a proposal, and it gets reviewed and commented on by the mayor, by John. Yes.
Okay. Now, you got Chapter 90 money listed twice in this thing, $2 million, in this five-year plan. Is that some of the money we're talking about?
Um, no. What you have in that five-year plan is in year one, you have nothing that you're... that we're showing because we're bringing in this $2 million from North Main Street and from Rock Street. In the following four years, it's the will of this administration to put $2 million annually into the capital plan to supplement Chapter 90.
All right. Now, you said there was $6 million.
Did I misstate that? Did I misunderstand? I thought it was $2 million.
Originally, Counselor, there were $2 million over the next five years. With the reallocation of these funds from streetscapes, that year one, $2 million had been pulled back. And we've added that $2 million for the next four years after.
Twice, Chapter 90 money for $2 million.
It should be in your capital plan, $2 million for each year, '23, '24, '25.
So how much money do you have to spend coming up? Is it $2 million or...?
It's... Based on this information, it's $4 million a year, roughly, rough numbers, over the next five years.
Okay. We have good contractors and everything?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I hope so. Everybody's complaining about the roads. Not as bad as Providence. The fire department, they're losing their tires on the potholes. Are we that bad?
We're ahead of somebody, Counsel.
Okay, Ayew.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Perera.
J.R., are we going to get a list of what streets are going to be repaired?
I provide that list... Generally, I provide that list when the contract is awarded. And the reason for that is I have to whittle the list down based on what number the contract comes in at. So we have a general list that we provide as part of the bid. And then the contractors have a chance to review that, and they review the quantities. They provide a bid to do the work. And then, once we receive and award the bid, then I know what the actual cost is to do the work. I know what my budget is, and we award the certain streets based on how it's priced out.
Ben, I'm going to tell you that I know that I get calls from people. I got a call from somebody on Alsop Street. I got a call from somebody on Small... I got a call from somebody on Small Street, which is, ironically, it is a small street. I went by there. I couldn't believe it. It's right near the, uh, school, it's right near Spencer Borden. And Alsop is up off of County. I cannot believe how bad those streets were. So if we as counselors get calls from people, specific streets, if we share with you, hey, these are the streets that we've gotten complaints?
I will, yes, I absolutely welcome it.
Will you drive out there and check it out to assess?
Yes, and I can tell you, um, Alsop and Smithy's are both, uh, those are right in that neighborhood. And Roper, we already worked with Liberty. Liberty's going in early this year.
To do those?
In those three streets and we'll be following them up later this year. So they're gonna be part of this year's contract.
Good.
Small Street is going to be in front of you for acceptance later this year. Um, I have to make some comments to the Planning Board about my original recommendation to them as to how that would be accepted, uh, because, um, it's not a great situation in terms of, uh, emergency vehicle access. So?
No, it's not, you're right.
We, we'd want to make some improvements there and it would slightly increase the cost, but it, for, in the interest of public safety, that's what, what my recommendation would be.
Just that, you know, many, I get a lot of calls, as do my colleagues.
Mm-hmm.
So if we shared with you, uh, some of the streets that, you know, people have big issues with and you can drive by there and see. I remember once we paid a company to come in and grade the streets, A, B, C, D, what streets were good, what streets were bad, which I thought was so ridiculous because as an engineer and as residents of this community, we know the streets. So I thought that was crazy, like, that should've been something that we could've done without paying, I don't know, maybe a hundred thousand dollars to have a study like that done. To me, that was a waste of money. I said it, but it passed. The other thing, um, that I would add is, I know you said you have good contractors. But what happens when a contractor completes a job? Who from your office is the one that goes out to inspect that that contractor is doing the job the way the job should be done? In other words, they're putting that asphalt against that curbing, it's the right height because there's streets that the asphalt's lower, the curbing is higher, and there's supposed to be a height?
Mm-hmm.
From curb to, to street.
So we have a construction management contract that is, where, that a consultant does, so they are on the job on a daily basis.
That's not the same ones that were on East Main Street, is it?
It is not.
Oh, good. Because I didn't think that they did a really good job, so. But we don't have anybody in-house that looks at that. We hire somebody to do that?
What it, what ends, what ends up happening is there are, we've got somebody that's on site and then as issues arise, I go out myself to observe, make comments and give specific direction where required. So I will go out and inspect. I, I did it on both East Main Street and on Purchasing Bank Street on a daily basis to assist with the management of those contracts.
I'm not too happy about that. Because East Main Street, I, I won't even talk about it, I'll let my colleague in seat number seven talk about it, but if somebody was checking, what were they checking? If there was a problem there? So I think you may, maybe you need to tweak that, who's monitoring and checking and making sure that things are done the way that they're supposed to be done. I happen to know a little bit more about this because that was my dad's job. So when Mr., my colleague in, uh, Seat Six, uh, Counsel Peckham would go and visit his dad over at DPW, I would have to go with my dad to check jobs on the weekend. So I know a little bit about that and I know that on Montop Street, it wasn't done right either. The curb that they did there, oh, it was a mess. And that had to be fixed. And they did fix it. I know when they did my street years ago, they put a berm and my dad said, you're gonna flood over here. Oh, no, no. Took me two years to get the contractor to come back and fix that because my dad was absolutely right. So you need to have somebody who knows what we're doing. If we're spending the money to do the job, we wanna make sure that our taxpayers are getting every penny's worth.
I certainly agree with you.
So there needs to be people out there. And everybody tries to cut corners, no matter how good they are. We all try to cut corners, save a penny here, there, whatever. So we really have to have, you know, double vision to go out there and check. So I just tell you to pay attention to that, maybe tweak that up a little. Uh, I know you're trying and I, it was a pleasure meeting with you and I think you're doing a great job. Um, so I appreciate it. It's not, uh, against you, but just that I know how things work and maybe we just need to be a little more vigilant. But thank you for your, for the work that you're doing as well, JR. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. And, and if we could just, um, JR, is there a point of clarification? Because I, I lost you a little bit. Uh, going off of what Counselor in Seat Eight was indicating, the order that's before us is a loan order of two point two million dollars. Uh, we have a city pavement management report, which I'm sure you're fully aware of. Was that consulted? Like, because I think I'm, I'm, I'm waiting to hear. Have there been specific streets that have been identified in this two point two million dollar loan order that you are going to pave? That's, I guess that's what I'm, I'm missing.
I haven't?
Is that not how that works?
It isn't technically how it works, but I can tell you that I've identified certain streets and I've worked with the gas company to make sure that they're getting it ahead of us, uh, as well as worked with, uh, the water and sewer to make sure that we're all on the same page about how we're moving forward.
Good.
Now, I can tell you that among the streets that the gas company is, uh, moving forward with, including, uh, Alsop and Smithy's, as I previously mentioned, Stafford Road would be another one. Now, and the reason I'm mentioning it is because, is specifically because the gas company agreed to go ahead and, and move forward. So that might be another piece of that puzzle. With that said, the, uh, all of it will come down to budget and I have to manage the contract based on how it's bid. So I'm reluctant to commit too far in terms of specific streets that I'm, that I'm going to do until I know, uh, exactly how the bid comes in and I know what the contract can afford.
All right, and I'll allow my colleagues to ask questions. I don't wanna jump in on that. But in order for contractors to bid, my understanding, and municipal government's totally different than the real world, so I guess my question is, if contractors are gonna go bid on specific streets, there had to have been streets identified with this two point two million dollar loan order, correct? What would they be bidding?
Uh, what, what they're primarily bidding are unit, unit items, unit price items.
Okay.
And then we give them, as a general guideline, a number of streets that we may apply those unit price items to.
Okay, all right. Counselor on Seat One, Counselor Kadeen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I was actually gonna go down that line with regards to the pavement management reports. Um, so just in terms of, and I, I know there's a lot of moving parts associated with the different roads and, and the timing of things, but, uh, you know, my understanding of the pavement management report is, is to give us, number one, an indication of the type of, um, you know, what our road is, how our roads are doing right now, right? The, the type of shape and, and whether or not they need to be repaired immediately. Um, so it gives you a, a complete condition of the roads. So, but based off of that, the, the reason for the management report is to make sure that we know which ones need to get done in, in the order associated with it. So do we not, is it a matter of updating the pavement management report so that at least this council and the general public has a list, uh, and it's a, something that can be on the website, at least a running list, that they roughly have an idea of, of where their roads are gonna be, right? So if you get four or five roads that you get done today, uh, this year, maybe, you know, they might be next on the list, but obviously it could be bumped out if, if you have a, uh, water project that needs to take place or Liberty Utilities is going somewhere. Why aren't we doing it that way? I mean, that's, it's called, it's called pavement management for a reason. It's, it's the management of our, our roadways, but it seems like we're getting away from it.
So I, I think the pavement management report is, is a big part of it. Um, we do definitely reference that, but the moving parts that you speak about with the water and sewer utilities, Liberty Utilities, uh, their mandated, um, work that they have to get in, uh, along with the aspect of wanting to spread these funds across the cities, right? So not one neighborhood or one area of the city is receiving the bulk of, of the funds is important. And in doing that, trying to identify those roadways in conjunction with the report, the utilities, um, and Liberty as well, to make sure that we're doing it efficiently, is a big piece.
I think my, my frustration comes in and, and I don't know why everybody's dictating to the city where we're gonna go, right? I think we should be dictating, at least for once in our, in our lifetime, to, to Liberty Utilities and everybody else, this is our ma-, uh, our pavement management report.
Yeah.
You follow the report. I recognize that they got sta-, state mandates, that they've gotta go in different locations. But if we have a report that's published, Liberty Utilities should be looking at our report to see which roads are, are coming down the list. And then they should be working and strategizing their work around what our pavement management facility is, right? Because it's fine. I, I, I think this is just another conversation that we need to have with the state delegation about putting some, uh, restrictions on, on Liberty Utility, right? And all these utility companies that go out and just do comp launch because there's obviously public health and safety issues that need to go on, but they are making a mess of our roadways. You know, I haven't seen our roads this bad in a very, very long time. And I know Counselor in Seat Seven joked about, we're not as bad as Providence, but we're, we're getting pretty close, you know, that there's only a matter of time before some of our brand-new trucks need significant alignments. I mean, we just need to look at the police department in terms of their vehicles and, and their front ends and everything else that, you know, when they're driving these cars twenty-four, seven, going over our roadways, that the amount of money and investment that, that goes into that. So I, I would just ask, and I, and I get it, I, I'm, I'm on your side, uh, during
Yeah.
my normal day, right? So I, so I get, I get that balance. I just, my frustration is I see it from every single community and I, I think at one point, we just need to take a stand and as a collective group, we need to start, you know, lobbying our delegation, saying that we need to put a stop to this, right? Because it just does not make any sense. And we're the ones, it's the taxpayers, and even the state reps. I mean, they're issuing Chapter Ninety, uh, borrowing and, and funds that are coming down only for us to utilize that money to be, have road openings, uh, you know, trench permits taken out and, you know, so all that, all that investment's being wasted on, on all the streets, not just in Florida, but throughout the, uh, the commonwealth. So I think we need to get a better handle on that. Um, I personally, as one council, like to see our pavement management, you know, reports being utilized and actually, you know, being adhered to. And, and again, it's a living document, right? Like anything else, there's gonna be some fluctuation on, on which roads we're gonna go, but I think the general public deserves to know, you know, where in the queue some of these roads are. Um, and, you know, and I think it's, it's just good for Liberty Utilities and, and obviously we can control water and sewer in terms of the projects that need to, to take place, so.
So I can certainly respect that and absolutely understand where you're coming from. I will just confirm for you, I mean, in our meeting with Liberty recently, last week, or the beginning of this week, rather, um, the scenario that you describe where we're dictating what we want done, uh, where we want them to go, uh, is happening more now than it ever has before. I, I can assure you of that. Um, and I know our issues with Liberty are well, um, documented, uh, throughout the years, so that might be hard for some to, on this, to believe, uh, but we have made strides with Liberty. Um, we lobbied them to add a position on their end at their cost, uh, to manage their projects and their roadway work. Uh, and that gentleman, um, is, is doing an outstanding job. Uh, I can tell you, there isn't a time where I've called him and he hasn't responded. I'm not defending Liberty. I'm not saying that there aren't issues with the work that's out there. All I'm speaking to is the point that you made, that I think it's time, as you said, for us to dictate where we want them to go. Uh, I think in a perfect world, we'd be able to do that a hundred percent of the time. Uh, I, I know we're not at a hundred percent, but we're, we're actually better off than we've ever been.
Yeah.
Dictating to them what we wanna see them do and the standards that we're going to hold them to.
And I recognize when we start dealing with the representatives and our liaisons with Liberty Utilities, they're typically pretty good, but a lot of the conversations that we're trying to have are outside their realm, right? So they've gotta go up the chain and it's just, it's a, it's a constant battle that I think needs to be at a whole, addressed at the state level.
Your support on that would be helpful.
Yeah, so, so I would like to see my colleagues put something together, a letter or to, to our local delegation to really kinda put some pressure on the, on the, you know, the state level to, to kind of really hone in on some of these utilities. Um, just in terms of, of the conversations that you're having, though, with, uh, Liberty Utilities, I know you're, you're talking about it. So in, in terms of the roads that they would be, so they're gonna be coming in, they're gonna be doing their, uh, new piping and things like that. Typically, if, if we're not doing the roads, they're required to, you know, backfill, do flowable fill, um, temporary patch, come back and redo, uh, the patch that's hopefully to the standards of, that's set and outlined in ordinance, right?
Um, Liberty does not do flow fill. Uh, gas companies are not required to do the flow fill because of, uh, a consideration for public safety. It basically revolves around their leak detection and their ability to?
So I guess that's something else we need to include in the letter because that just completely undermines the roadway, which, which just leads to the major problem that we have. So if they're not doing flow, flowable fill and they're, they've got settlement and I don't care how long, if we wait a year for the settlement, right? You're still gonna see, and we see it all the time, you see these trenches, trenches go, they keep it for a year, right? And even the, even the contractors that do flowable fill, and, and if it's not done properly, you still have settling of the trenches.
Right, right. And with, with the absence of flow fill, Counselor, the most important part of that without flow fill is your compaction. Um, so that, that is, your subgrade compaction is what's key. And I, and I'm not sure if you were part of the committee when we met with Liberty, uh, I believe it was a couple of years ago. Uh, that was one of the biggest pieces, was the compaction, subgrade compaction. Now, flowable fill is obviously gonna give you a better, um, stable, uh, underground base than, you know, your best compacted soil. But, uh, to JR's point, I think that, and my, I think, and I could be wrong, I'm not a gas expert, but I believe that's just industry, industry standard for safety. The flowable fill is, is tougher to get through and get to and detect the leak through than, than your typical soil would be.
So then, that's fine, then that just leads to the, uh, issue that Counselor in Seat Eight brought up, you know, who's, who's watching these contractors come in? Because I, you and I both know?
Understood, yeah.
The compaction, they're, they're not compacting the way they're supposed to be compacting, right?
Understood, Counselor, right?
They get a little compacter, they go once and they're not, it's not every, you know, two inches, and I, I'm not in the trade, so I don't know if it's two inches, a, a foot or whatever the case may be, but they do it once.
You're in the ballpark.
They, they do it once and that's it, and then they put the, you know, they, they put the asphalt on top of it and then you get all the settlement, which is why they try to do the flowable fill. You're supposed to still do compaction at that point, but we, we don't get the quality of work that we're supposed to be getting. So then that just leads to, what are we doing internally, you know, from, from the city's standpoint, to make sure that when these companies are going out there, whoever the contractor may be, that the compaction is taking place the way it should be taking place? Now, it's almost impossible for us to hire, I mean, we would have to hire a, a full department just, just to make sure that we have somebody on staff during the projects to watch and monitor, right? The compaction, the, you know, the application of the, of the asphalt. And so it doesn't make any sense because we'll, so we'll never rectify the situation if we're gonna have trench openings, right? So it just, it's gonna create issues constantly. So I just, I don't, I don't know what the result is, I just, I'm not, I know, I know that I'm not happy with what I see now. So that, that's the only, the only thing, but?
I can tell you that we're making progress in that area too, in discussions that I've had with them. And I can't make any commitments, but what has been told to me is that, um, they are going to be making some specific improvements in their process that would give us greater certainty about the quality of the backfill and compaction work that they're doing.
Okay. Uh, so where I was going with this though was, so if, you know, Liberty Utilities is doing a, a trench opening and they're doing their, they're laying their new pipes, they would have to come back, uh, put their temporary then, and then put their finer, final binder they would have to come back, uh, put their temporary, then, and then put their finer, final, uh, binder course on it with the infrared and all that other stuff. Uh, on any given project, that, that would probably run, and I'm just guessing here, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on the length of the road and all that other stuff. So the areas where they're following us, so they're, they're, they're no, they know we're gonna be doing that, that roadway, they come in, they do their pipes. Are we collecting any type of money? Have we had, had any conversation about if we were not doing this road, you would have to re, you know, you'd have to do these pipes?
Absolutely.
Um, is costing you fifty thousand, so kick over fifty thousand to the, to the city?
It isn't a, right now, it's a paper transaction, and the result of it is, for example, um, if you were to look at Cache and Claflin Streets in the Flint, um, they did both of those streets and they fully paved, I believe, Cache, and we're paving Claflin.
So we're looking at, to make sure that they're, and we're doing it for every single, every single project? I know, I know typically sometimes with those smaller projects, but if, if we've got ten roadways that they're, you know, that we're gonna be constructing or doing full death reclamation on for this, you know, construction year, and they're going in there. Are we seeing for every single one, uh, an estimate on how much footage the piping's gonna be and how much they would have to do for asphalt and all that? And then trying to get it somewhere else?
Yes, we're, we're preparing those and, and, and we're in contact with them about making sure the city is getting equitable value back in what we're saving them on the upfront capital cost.
And so where, where's the check and balance of that? How, how do we, as councillors, how do we see exactly what that cost is associated with? You know, so we, we've got a loan order here for two point two million dollars. Of that two point two million dollars, how much is being kicked in by Liberty Utilities if they were, if they were going, assuming that they were, they were going to every single street that we're gonna repair? How, how do we see that, that return on investment?
On a, on two point two million dollars worth of work, um, you might be looking at rough, very rough numbers, uh, six or seven hundred thousand and top. And, uh, our typical agreement is about a third of the cost of the top that they would, uh, reimburse us.
Liberty Utility?
Correct, in either, uh, compensatory work, or, uh, in one case, it was, um, in one case, they did pay us cash.
So I, I think councillor, and I'm gonna borrow a quote, but I think councillor in, uh, seat six will appreciate it, cuz it's Ronald Reagan. So, uh, trust with verification, right? So how do I, you know, you're, you're saying that, I, I just, I, I like, and I trust you, but I wanna see some verification. So when I ask, you know, when I ask the administrator, can you give me a documentation on how much, you know, Liberty Utilities has...
I'll get you a breakdown.
That's why I'm always cautious, councillor, to put numbers out there that we can't confirm, and to your point. Uh, but there, there is a return that we get back. Um, I don't think at this point, with the two point two million, we could put a number on that for you today.
But don't, but don't confuse the, I guess, the point that I'm trying to make. I'm not, I'm not necessarily concerned of holding JR to the number that it's six hundred thousand.
You just wanna ensure that we're getting our fair share.
There's, there's gotta be a point somewhere that there's a reporting mechanism to say, okay, we just, we just invested two point two million dollars into the roadways. Liberty Utilities went in there, did the piping, and they're on the hook for a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. I can get a report saying that they just paved, what, just say Cash Street for two hundred thousand dollars in exchange for these roads. That, that's what I'm just trying to figure out, how we can see that and, and just be sure that we're getting our money from Liberty Utilities. Cuz at the, at the end of the day, they, they, they're a profit, for-profit company, making a ton of money. Just, and I, I, I think we can all agree on that, the prices are through the roof, so...
So I'll work with JR and we'll try to put something together. So at least on the projects that we have going forward, you can, we can provide to the council, um, what the savings has, have been.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then just finally, in terms of the two point two, and I like this, that we're actually throwing some additional monies into the chapter nineties to, to kinda really get our roadways. Are we planning to do that next year and the year after in terms of bonding or utilizing different funds? What are we looking to do?
So, so going forward in your capital plan is another two thousand, I mean, two million dollars annually that we hope to come to this council for authorization for bonding that we will add to, um, the chapter ninety, or supplement the chapter ninety going forward.
Thank you, with that I yield.
Thank you, and, um, before I acknowledge our councillor in seat five, if maybe a councillor in seat one or a city administrator can clarify a point that I'm struggling to comprehend. When we, when you have a loan order of, of this magnitude of two point two million dollars, is it uncommon to not identify specific streets that we are going to pave? I'm having a hard time understanding that. Maybe it's a municipal thing, but we have a document before us where we are going to have a loan order of two point two million dollars and we can't identify, and this isn't a directive to the administration in any way, shape, or form, but you can't tell me or any councillor what one street of the two point two million dollars is going to be paved?
No, I, I certainly understand that, um, council president. Um, so it is very similar to when we get the chapter ninety money, we get approximately two million dollars, one point nine million dollars. The names of the streets are not identified, as Mr. Frye pointed out. Um, once we go out to bid and we determine what the unit price is, then we have a better idea of, um, identifying the streets. In this particular case, because each year going forward, we are attempting to, um, supplement the chapter ninety money, um, the administration will be working closer with, um, the engineering department to determine, um, which streets make the most amount of sense from the road property, um, management report, together with the fact that, um, the idea is to spread the repairs on these streets across the city and not necessarily do them all in the same, um, area. I know the one street that has been talked about over and over again is Stafford Road. Um, that is a longer street, it's gonna take more resources to do Stafford Road. Um, so that may be one that is, is being done in the south end, um, and maybe as a selection, um, Mr. Frye will look at that property report or road report and determine that maybe he can do two or three smaller streets in the north end. But, um, we're trying to split the additional monies to include the chapter ninety monies across the city. But when the bid goes out, um, council president, it doesn't identify the streets.
Interesting, thank you. Councillor in seat five, councillor Lee.
Uh, my couns- my colleagues were very thorough in their questions about this specific topic, and it made me, uh, pull up some ordinances just as a, just to, just to ask some questions about that. Uh, you have sixty-six dash three nine two, this was a correspondence that came back to us as well, um, a few months back. And I just kind of realized that we have these ordinances in place here, um, where we need majority, uh, vote from the council if you approve an excavation from a utility company, uh, if the road is less than five years old. So how much of, how much of this has been worked on that, that we've been talking about that it's been less than five years?
They happen from time to time, councillor, we try to avoid it at all costs. Um, we try not to go into moratorium streets, which is what that would be considered, less than five years. Um, but it does happen, uh, emergencies, um, utility breaks, things of that nature have to, have to be excavated to be done.
And that, and that qualifies as an emergency?
What would that be?
What, if there was, if there was breaks, that would qualify?
Yeah, yeah.
So the ones that, the ones that aren't emergencies, where you're doing, where you're pulling up, you know, where you're pulling up road for a street that's less than five years, um, in three dash, in sixty-six three nine, we have, they have to pay the penalty, right? If whoever is, whatever utility company is pulling it up, right?
What we generally do is we, uh, present to the council a proposal for how the road shall be repaired. Um, so when it isn't an emergency, when it's a, somebody's doing a new construction, or they're, uh, re, or they're refurbishing a home or, or a business, then, and they need to renew their water, sewer, or gas, then they will come to us and will present, uh, for council's approval, um, what they need to do to, uh, repair the road in that instance.
And if they're in violation or if they're not doing what they need to do, then is there a penalty?
If they don't follow the permit, yes, there's, they have to...
And how often does that happen? Does that happen frequently?
I would say a couple times a year since I've been here.
Okay, um, I just, I, I had to look up those ordinances because I was, because of the conversations that were being had. But, um, my original question to you is based on, uh, what I, what I feel would be environmental and public safety concerns, uh, in the South Wataupa area. A couple of us have been, um, driven around the South Wataupa Pond area. The roads in the, in the back area are beyond, you know, damaged. Um, they've been neglected for a very long time, they'll rip your car apart if you drive down that way. And my concern about it is, there's a lot of dead wood out in those forest areas. And if there is any kind of, uh, fire or any kind of concern or emergency concern, um, will our trucks be able to ride on those roads? Um, they've been severely neglected, they haven't been taken care of for quite some time. And I know that we, I know the council president, I know that some of us have been asking for specific roads to be worked on. And I also recognize that the residential areas are of more, higher importance, I, I suppose, if we were to make a hierarchy. However, this is a very important situation, so has that been addressed in any of, in any future plans at all? Because we've driven out that way, and, and I mean, it's literally just, we'll completely rip cars apart out that way.
So when you, you say South Wataupa, uh, you mean the North Wataupa, Copac- Copacurta area, correct?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, but yeah, but that, that area where we, I mean, we've been, I had the luxury, and a couple of us had the luxury of being taken around that area. I mean, I used to go down there back in the day, but I haven't seen, I haven't really paid attention to how bad the roads are. And there's roads that are completely undrivable out there, they've just been neglected for so long. So I know that there's a higher priority, you know, that's been expressed by other councillors, but I think this has to also be addressed as well.
So, uh, that has been something that we've been working on, uh, cooperatively with Mass DOT as well as, uh, in this specific instance, with National Grid. National Grid has a couple, um, large construction projects that are occurring that, uh, transit through the reservation area. So we are working with them to, uh, improve the roads that they need to be improved. Some of that is gonna be, um, some of it will likely be just a refinished gravel surface.
Okay.
So an improvement, um, but not a full repair. Uh, some of it, I've worked with Mast dot, and they've approved, uh, what I call a reservation road concept.
Okay.
Which allows for, um, not a full Mast dot spec road, with the understanding that most of these reservation roads are not plowed. Uh, they're not in inhabited areas, so they aren't plowed, so they don't see the same, uh, loading that a regular street sees.
Right.
So we received approval from Mast dot, uh, that chapter ninety funding could be used in reservation road areas for this alternative construction method, which is a reduced cost.
Then fixing it to a standard road, yes. But it would still give us an opportunity if there was any kind of emergency to have trucks go out?
It would provide a drivable surface as opposed to the muffler destroyers that, uh, I've paid for one or two out of my own pocket.
We're, we're kinda, I mean, if there was a fire out there right now, I, I would, if I was a betting person, I don't think we'd be able to make a lot of progress out that way right now, the way the roads are. But that's just me, I yield.
Thank you. Councillor, point of information, seat one. Thank you, so are you talking about the chip seal? Is that the application you're talking about, the rubberized chip seal?
No, it's actually, um, the, uh, construction method that we worked on was to bring in gravel enough to fill in the craters and rebuild the crown. Um, most of those roads have, uh, kind of a macadam base, and the base itself is pretty solid. Uh, it's just the fact of infiltration and many, many, many years of neglect, uh, have caused those craters. So the construction method is to bring in gravel, re, reform the road, and then come over top with, uh, two layers of, uh, two-inch, um, uh, regrind material. So it's a processed, uh, recycled asphalt, uh, but it's laid down hot. And then after we let that sit a season, then we come in and we can either do a chip seal over top of that to seal it, or, uh, what we recently did on Yellow Hill Road was we did a standard, um, a, a standard asphalt top.
So do we, do we go out right now for a bid for the, uh, so, so I don't, I, I personally don't like the chip seal, but the rubberized chip seal, cuz you don't get as much of the, uh, the rocks that are kicking up.
Okay.
So, ha- do we go out and get prices on that? Cuz I think it's, it's probably half the price of, of what you're gonna do for a Millen overlay. But I, I think that's another option for roads when you start getting towards the reservation that are not, you know, highly traveled. Uh, as long as the base is good, you, you're gonna get at least a good, you know, fifteen years. You may not get the twenty, twenty-five years that you would get for a Millen overlay, but you're, you're close to fifteen if you've got a good base and it's half the price, right? So you get a lot more, um, bang for your buck. But the, the problem with, if you do the stone, the stone chip, uh, the chip seal with the stone, it just kinda kicks up and it takes a while to get it compacted, a little drivable, but...
It's not something we go out for now, but it's something we can definitely look at going forward, um, possibility. Like you said, when we get to those more, uh, out, outlying roadways, uh, when you're not in the center of the city, yeah.
Thank you, councillor in seat two, councillor Deanna.
Just to piggyback on my colleague in seat five, uh, one quick question. There are piles of what appear to be, um, road materials piles on corners. Can any of that be utilized?
That is something that we do utilize, and that's why they're there. Um, we go out there periodically and generally when the resident calls and, and says that the road's been getting worse, uh, they, they wash out along the side of the roads. Uh, that's the old, um, millings that we've received from, from other road projects that have been done in the city and under chapter ninety. Those are stored at the DPW, and then we, we haul them up there and we leave them in stockpiles. So we can just easily go up with a machine, uh, spread them, roll them, compact them, and then give them a decent service, uh, surface for the next, hopefully, six months to a year. And then we go and repeat that process again when necessary.
So how much worse do they have to be than what they are to use the materials?
I mean, where that material is, councillor, there's really only one stretch that we do that on, honestly. Um, a lot of the other areas, uh, that councillor in seat five is talking about, uh, as JR said, are uninhabited areas. I mean, you can take that roadway to get from one house to another house, but along that entire stretch, there are no residences. Uh, every residence out in the Copacurta watershed area can be gotten to by a roadway. Um, you know, Yellow Hill was recently paved, um, Indian Town, uh, Copacurta is paved, there are some giant craters, I'll give you that. There are some drainage issues, and I'll, I'll also give you that, um, but there is asphalt pavement to that. Um, in that area where you see those grindings, uh, piled up, there's one particular house there that's, I'd say, maybe a hundred yards up, um, that we need to continue to maintain that roadway so that the, that resident can get in and out. But once you pass that one residence, you have to go all the way to, um, um, Blossom Road, basically, to, to get back to an area where it's paved, then there's another house. So, um, that's really in one area that we do that. It's not as though we have a bunch of stockpiles and that's just, that's what we do and that's all we're willing to do. Uh, that's just basically to, to help one, one particular residence that has a hard time and then border, border residents out there and deserves to be able to get in their house, um, but it's not something we do everywhere.
Thank you. Now, on the, um, loan order, how many roads typically do we do in the city without this additional money? And how many more roads will we be doing because of the additional money?
A lot of factors go into that, councillor, um, length of the roadway, um, curbing, sidewalks. Uh, some, some streets in the city, as you know, don't have, uh, uh, concrete sidewalks, they're grass sidewalks. Um, you know, do you have curbing in the area? How long is the stretch? Uh, is it, you know, South Street from point A to point B or point A to point D? Um, there are a lot of factors that go into it. Uh, so depending on, as JR said, the unit pricing, um, and what, you know, the street report says, um, the will of the administration, uh, the, the residents, obviously themselves will reach out to councillors like yourselves, looking to have a street repaired. I've, I've been asking for twenty years. Uh, inevitably, we, we have to take all of that into account and then look at the overall, uh, miles of roadway, um, or linear feet that we wanna do. Take the unit pricing and then divide it up in amongst those streets that we feel we can do. So we may set out to, 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 to have a goal of twenty-five, uh, but when we start to really look at the priorities and the streets that we need to do, uh, and some that we, we'd like to see done, uh, you have to see where that number lies, and it may dwindle down to eighteen or twenty. Uh, all depends, there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Well, I am glad to see that the taxpayers are gonna s- get a bit of a return on their money, and that this money is gonna be put into streets and sidewalks. Um, now, I only speak for myself, but I get the general impression that this body is very interested in accountability and enforcement moving forward. We don't wanna have any of the failures we've had in the past. Uh, we want the taxpayers to get the biggest bang for their buck that they can get with the most productivity. With that said, um, can you explain, expand on larger corridor projects, what you mean by that?
Generally, those are your major thoroughfares. So heav- heavily trafficked roads, uh, arterial streets. Um, some examples might be New Boston Road, uh, Robeson, uh, Stafford Road, Dwelly.
Okay, um, now, there know, I know there's been discussion in the past. So moving forward, can we utilize oversight committees for these projects, or will we?
Uh, I think that'd be a discussion that has to be had. Uh, I, I mean, I, I, I don't know if, you know, I thi- I think the oversight committees are reserved for the bigger projects, the tip projects, like we've been discussing on, on New, uh, Befford Street. Obviously, you know, the South Main revitalization project, I would say, you know, would call for an oversight committee. Um, but to your point, as far as accountability, as I mentioned to councillor Pelletier at our last meeting when we discussed the East Main project, um, you know, we looked at an issue, we saw, uh, some, some issues rear its ugly head on that, that project and Purchase and Bank as well. Um, and I think what we need to do and what, what has to be clear is that we've learned from our mistakes and that going forward, those won't be repeated. Uh, that was the assurance I had given to councillor Pelletier at that meeting, I give you that same assurance here today. Um, if I have anything to do with it, there will be accountability, we will keep, um, as many eyes possible on those projects to make sure that subbase compaction, proper materials, uh, proper oversight i- is, is being maintained throughout the whole project. But I think an oversight committee for each and every chapter ninety... But I think an oversight committee for each and every Chapter 90 contract and each and every street that we do, I think, might be a bit much. Uh, I think that would be reserved for more of your, your larger infrastructure projects. Uh, but I can understand why you feel the way you do. Um, and all we can do is, is move forward and try to assure you and show you as we go, uh, that these things are being done the right way. And I think that, that's something we'll be able to accomplish.
Yeah, 'cause I think from my standpoint, large project to small project, the idea is to get it right the first time. Because collectively, small projects are the equivalent of a large project. And we're still talking big dollars. Um, so with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
The only thing that I would like to add, uh, was to Counselor Lee when he spoke about the five-year moratorium. Just like we're talking about utility companies and the city getting on the same page and knowing what work is to be done. Basically, the right hand knows what the left hand's doing. The same thing happens here in the city. Because that five-year moratorium, if somebody goes and gets a building permit on a street that has been paved less than five years, they're not told, there's no checkoff box. So, now they go, they build the house and then they come to the council and ask for permission to open the street. What is this council supposed to do after somebody's already built the house? It happened on Valentine Street, it happened on Plymouth Avenue, there's a couple of places that that happened. So, there should be a checkmark there. Even when somebody goes for a variance to build a house, they grant them the variance, then they go to the building department and they get a permit. So, that's something that, you know, perhaps needs to be tweaked into the, uh, to the ordinance, that there needs to be something at the building department too. Because that's, are we gonna say no to somebody who's already built a house and they're gonna stop paying a mortgage? But no, you can't open the street, we're not hooking you up to water and sewer. Can't do that. So, we need to be just as proactive as we want the utility companies to be. Just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further?
I yield.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're gonna get right into full counsel.
Go ahead.
For the city council meeting will now be called to automatic, Madam Clark.
Counselors, Kadeem.
Here.
Dionne.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Olivera LeBeau.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Peckham.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Pereira.
Here.
President Pata.
Here. If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you and a salute to the flag.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clark.
The first item before you is the mayor's submission of the five-year capital improvement plan.
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer to finance has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Lee. All those, uh, discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the five-year financial forecast of city revenue and expenditures.
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer to finance has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item three is a communication from the mayor and an order of premium in the amount of one hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars to take costs of improvements at Abbott Court Playground, Kennedy Park, and Maplewood Park.
To refer to finance?
Second.
Motion to refer to finance has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
During the briefing, you know, Mayor Coogan gave us a heads up on what this was, so, um, if my colleagues are okay with it, I'm, I'm ready to adopt and move forward with it. I think it's just.
I'm ready to.
Is there a motion to adopt that will take precedence?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counselor.
Item number four is the mayor's communication and a proposed ordinance modification for the EMT position.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Peckham.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I'm reviewing, or I have been reviewing, uh, what's, what the proposal is and I have several questions. One being how many EMT basics the city's looking to hire. Um, the reason I'm looking for that information is, um, currently the Forest of Fire Department, we have about ninety-five firefighters that are EMT basics. And to my understanding, they're currently manning rescues, um, to fill or backfill openings. Um, another question I had was is, are we hiring these, these EMTs for the private trans- transportation that we just started recently? Where Rescue Nine and Ten are taking patients and driving them. I, I saw Rescue Nine in Rainham not that long ago and from what I'm being told, they do transport as far as, as Boston. I can't say that's factual, one hundred percent factual, but it's the information that I, I've been given. I wanna know if it's cost-effective to hire the EMT basics and not use the firefighters. Whereas if we're using Rescue Nine and Ten to transport all over the state, um, we start to run into issues such as vehicle usage, fuel, repairs, um, things along that, that nature. The other thing is, is in, in a letter from, uh, Director, EMS Director Olivera, it states that, uh, it would fill two non-emergency positions for a rescue. Now, we have two rescues, to my understanding, that do transportation. Um, how filling just two spots for two trucks alleviates any cost? Um, those are the questions I have. I, I think there's a lot of things that need to be gone over, um, and looked at in ordinance before we, uh, we move with this. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. And just so everybody, everyone, everybody's own edification, back about four years ago when I chaired ordinance, I know there was a number of positions that were in ordinance that weren't used, weren't discussed. That, that comit- that committee at that time did, uh, quite a bit of work with the administration at that time to clear up through human resources, though the abundance of positions that weren't used. This, I believe, was one of those positions that fell into the removed items for ordinance that needs to go to ordinance anyway. Um, so, I think the Counselor in seat six has valid questions. I think the chiefs could come down and answer those questions so you can feel more comfortable. Uh, but just so everybody is aware, this was in ordinance before. It was cleaned out when there was duplication of positions. So, it is appropriate either way that this needs to go to ordinance anyway. Counselor, you still have the floor.
I just, uh, I just wanna make sure that we're not overspending, um, and make, especially on a program that we don't even know is successful yet. If, if, I asked yesterday, I'd spoken to Mrs. Sahadi, um, to see how much money we've taken in so far with this program. Um, I didn't receive the information, I know she's very busy. Um, I just wanna make sure it's cost-effective and, uh, that, uh, i- it's conducive to the taxpayer, with that I yield.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem?
I apologize, maybe I was sleeping for the last couple of years, but can I just get edification from Counselor in seat six? Did you, did you state that we are doing private transports?
We are.
Wow. All right. That's a conversation I think the council needs to have, especially with the, with the mayor, why the city is doing private transports. I've got a major wish with that.
Are they doing?
So, it's going, it's going to ordinance, but I'm, I'm on ordinance. I'll tell you right now. I'll do whatever I, I need to do to, to keep that in ordinance if we are doing private transports. So, that's just for the record. I yield.
Counselor, anything further from the council? Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Yeah, you know, the EMTs and the monies they're pulling in, uh, it's a lot of money per year. I don't think we would sacrifice a private, uh, uh, emergency, uh, unless it was feasible for the city. And let me tell you, you got transport, I got transport for Farver to Providence, they charge seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred dollars. And the, the, the insurance pays for it. So, if there's a need and that, we can do it, I mean, uh, so be it. If we're getting seventeen or two thousand to go to Boston and we got enough units here, why not? But we can review it, go through ordinance, whatever. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
I don't, I don't wanna have this be a long debate and conversation, because we can have it, but we're not in the business of being a private EMT organization that does transports. We're not here to make money. We're here to provide a service to our residents that include, you know, making sure that their, whatever health issues that they're dealing with, emergency-related, that we're addressing them. That's, that's what the fire and police, they're public first responders. We should not be going to somebody's home, transporting them to Providence, transporting them to Boston. We shouldn't have any of that taking place. So, that's just, we're, we're not here to make money, right? With that, that's not, that's not our, our, our business. And, and quite frankly, we talk about manpower, we talk about vehicles, we talk about everything else associated with, you know, pensions. We, we shouldn't be expanding. We just got out of the trash business, right? And, and so now we're going into the transportation business, private transportation business for EMS. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
And just to elaborate, one other thing. Um, an initial agreement, to my understanding, was, um, that EMS proposed to the Forest of Fire Department to utilize a firefighter on their rescue. Initially, it was agreed upon or, or discussed and it was verbal, was a twenty-two dollar detail pay for the firefighter to be on the rescue. Now, to me, that's more cost-effective than sending somebody through EMT school, okay? Um, and then paying them, here it says, at step five, nineteen seventy-five a night for a shift. Um, I think we're better off utilizing what we have already. Again, I'll, I'll echo what, uh, Counselor in seat one said. We're not in the business of, of transport. Now, we have X amount of ambulances and we have Rescue Nine and Ten on a transport somewhere and somebody has a heart attack on Bay Street, now we gotta call Somerset Mutual Aid or a private company to come in and, and, and take care of the patient. That, the timing of that i- is not good and it, it's, it's not beneficial to anybody in the city. Um, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor President, we have Mr. Olivera here and before everybody goes on, I know it's going to ordinance, but before everybody goes off the rails with what they think it might be or not be, can we just have him come down and answer the question?
You wanna waive the rules?
Waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel, um, come on down. Hey, if you could, again, if we can clarify this specific item. It's going to ordinance anyway, so we don't have to have a three-hour.
Information between now and ordinance.
Counsel, I, I totally agree. We, I just wanna make it clear, we don't need to get into a two-hour debate about this. Let's get our questions asked briefly and, and get rolling. Mr. Olivera, Madam City Administrator.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, yes, some, some of what you're saying, uh, Counsel Peckham, is true. Some is incorrect information. Um, when you talk about the twenty-two dollars an hour pay rate for the details, initially that was the intent. However, under labor law, once the employee works over there allotted hours, I cannot pay them a detail pay.
Okay.
I have to actually pay them their overtime rate. So, that's what we do. So, I can't pay them the, the detail per se. What we do is we have first right of return to any patient we transport to St. Anne's. We're not on the rotation, we're not going to personal homes. So, if I bring Mrs. Jones to St. Anne's for a heart attack, two weeks later she needs to be transported to rehab, we'll get the first right. They call us and we have Rescue Nine do the return to the rehab or to the home residents.
Now, with, uh.
Counselor, I, Counsel Vice President has the floor and then I'll, no problems.
I, I clarify, Rescue Ten, um, I was running Rescue Nine and Ten. But due to budgetary issues with the overtime, I, I'm not, I don't utilize Rescue Ten at the time because it's just fiscally, with overtime, it's not, it's not conducive.
And Mr. Olivera, before I acknowledge, uh, Counsel Vice President on this, was there a specific directive given for these or has this been longstanding practice? Where did, where did these private transfers come from?
This, uh, idea, the returns was talked about with the prior administration and they were the ones that gave us the, you know, the green light. Well, obviously, input from myself and Chief Lynch on this.
Thank you. Counsel Vice President.
Uh, just two questions. Thank you for, for coming down. You said that, um, it's the twenty-two hour rate until they reach a certain amount of allotted hours?
The twenty-two dollars was a detail rate agreed to.
Until they reach how many hours?
Initially. Uh, but once a firefighter reaches their forty-two hours for the week, which is basically the eight-week cycle, that's what it averages out to, we cannot pay them a detail rate to work on the ambulance, we have to pay them the overtime rate under the labor laws. That, that would be a nightmare for us, you know, two years down the road if someone got upset and said, you should've been paying me overtime. We're gonna have to pay them all that back pay. So, we have no choice but to pay the overtime.
Is it only certain firefighters that were doing this?
Any, any firefighter that's an EMT and does all the protocol training and, um, meets all the requirements throughout EMS Training Division is eligible to work on our rescues, absolutely.
Okay. And then just one last question. Um, when you say you get the first right, um, how often do you say yes or no to that?
So, I, we transport to St. Anne's about three hundred times a month, give or take. And about thirty-two percent of those patients are transported out by ambulance. So, I can tell you, we started doing it October fifteenth. As of December thirty-first, we did a hundred and sixty-four transports. We billed out a hundred and eight thousand dollars. We've collected thirty-four thousand dollars so far. Obviously, with Blue Cross Medicare, we're still waiting to see exactly what that return's gonna be. But that's what we collected so far, thirty-four thousand. On, um, the hundred and four thousand, a hundred and eight thousand we billed out.
So, if they need to go somewhere or you've got the first right, um, how often do you say no, you're not able to, because you're busy on other calls?
Uh, we probably at least twenty-five percent of the time.
I yield, Counselor.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
What are the parameters for transportation? Now, you say you get an elderly female, uh, doctor recommends she goes to, I don't know, Grafton.
Yes, so.
Do we go there?
So, being, agreeing with Stewart Hospital, yes, we're, they'll, St. Elizabeth's in Boston, they're, they're affiliated with them. We go to St. Elizabeth's, we go out to Stoughton, we go to Worcester. Um, we do do those transports. I can tell you, four o'clock tonight, they went from St. Anne's to Worcester, dropped off a patient and came back, yes.
No, I, I, I'm not gonna lie to you. I have a problem with a Forest of Rescue that costs X amount of dollars traveling from here to Worcester. Um, we have a, we're owed a hundred and eight thousand dollars, we've only collected thirty-four grand. I, it doesn't seem cost-effective to me, it doesn't seem efficient at all. Um, now Rescue Ten, now if we get two more EMTs, is Rescue Ten gonna go into the transport? Are we putting Brewster out of business? That's one, that's what I'm asking.
No.
Are we trying to?
No. We're not going on the rotation to the hospital to be on the rotation. It's just first right of return of the patients that we bring into the hospital.
All right. Now, if I went by rescue to St. Anne's and it was, uh, the, the doctor said, all right, well, Mr. Peckham has to go to Pittsfield, whatever, rehabilitation center. We're taking them from St. Anne's to Pittsfield?
If we're avail- if the truck's available, we would take you, yes.
Okay. Um, on average, what does it cost for a rescue to leave the, uh, station house? Just one run? Do you know, top of your head? Maybe seven hundred to a grand?
Yeah.
Fuel, uh, to me, it's.
One call?
One call.
No, I, I, I mean, you, one call. I'd say if, an overtime, a day shift for an overtime paramedic is probably just like, it's like three hundred and forty-five dollars for the, the ten-hour shift.
Okay, so you get three hundred and forty-five dollars times.
And the firefighter would be the same, because they have to be the same.
Times two paramedics, are we sending squad eleven out to with that? So, they're, they're just.
Correct. That, that's strictly for nine-one-one.
Well, for rough numbers, three fifty per paramedic.
Correct.
On the truck.
And then fuel for the day.
So, that's seven hundred bucks just to get the truck out the door. And then we're gonna take them and spend, I can't even tell you how much fuel on ambulance from here to Pittsfield or here to Worcester or here to Grafton.
When, when you, when you get into the, uh, non-emergency transport stuff, it, it's all about the mileage too. So, you get seven dollars a mile to Pitts, uh, Pittsfield.
Okay.
Plus, plus the rate.
The other issue I have is, is having a rescue like that, that one of our fellow constituents here would need immediately is three hundred miles away in Pittsfield or a hundred and some odd miles away in Worcester. Um, I would like to see the money that we spent on that vehicle, that emergency vehicle, be used in the City of Fall River, for City of Forest of Emergency purposes.
Yeah, so, when, we run, we run five medical rescues twenty-four, seven.
Mm-hmm.
And we have Rescue Nine during the day. Uh, they do do city calls when they're not doing the returns. Usually from eight to one, they're doing city calls. The, the returns don't start coming until one o'clock and from about one to six, they're doing the returns. Our rescues do about four, forty-one hundred calls per year. And we did twenty-four thousand responses last year with eighteen thousand transports. Um, we only gave away, uh, thirty-four mutual aid calls for the month of January this year.
Okay.
Um, between Somerset, Westport, and a couple of private services.
Just one other question. Um, involved in this whole transportation scenario, do we have a paramedic on detail at Primate Care?
We do.
Okay. When did that come about? Did it come about at the same time as this?
No.
When did that start?
Approximately two years ago.
So, we're paying a Forest of Paramedic to stay at Primate Care or are they paying for the paramedic to be there?
They pay us a certain percentage of a salary to be there. Um, prior to that, we used to get about a hundred calls out of there. Since he's been there, we get a percentage of his salary and we. Since he's been there, we get a percentage of his salary, and we have transported 400 people out of there since April of last year.
Now, that leads to me to the question of, why do we need extra EMTs or medics if we have enough? Right now, we have one EMS director, one deputy director, four captains, five lieutenants, and 39 medics. Am I right?
Correct. Give or take, yes.
It's the email I got from you today.
Yeah.
We're at about $3.66 million for your budget, okay? If we have enough manpower to detail medics to Primate Care and-
He's not detailed. That's actually a full-time position.
Or a full-time position. If we had enough medics to say, "Okay, Primate Care, we're going to put a full-time paramedic in your building," why now do we need more EMT basics to cover one truck?
So right now, I have three open positions. If you can find me a paramedic to hire, I will hire them.
Have we tried?
It's a, it's a, there's a national shortage. You can go, go to Attleboro, call them. They just hired eight basic EMTs. With the agreement, they have to get their paramedic.
Yep.
So there are just not enough paramedics to go around. So the issue we have is, there's just no paramedics to hire. So what the, the, the proposal I have in front of you is not to add positions. All I want to do is hire one EMT basic.
Okay, it says two here. That's why I had asked. You wanted to fill, fill two positions.
It says two.
I'm sorry. So yeah, it'd be two, two EMT basics to staff, to fill the holes where the paramedic positions are now. They would get paid as an EMT basic if it was approved under ordinance. The agreement is they'd sign a condition of employment. Within 14 months of being hired, they'd have to obtain their paramedic. So anyone we hire will be in paramedic school. I've already contacted Nemec, which is out of East Bridgewater, a very prestigious paramedic school, and they've given me a list of names of candidates that are at the top of the class that they predict that will complete the program. And then when they get their paramedic, they would just, hopefully, we'd recruit them, and they would stay and be paramedics with the department.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to throw up.
No, it's okay. So in the future, we have talked about the fire EMS merger, and that is moving forward. But right now, that we are not hiring firefighters for EMS specific. It's still for the suppression side. At some point, that may start to change, but until that happens, I still have to staff the rescue. So I'm just coming up with different plans to try and, one, recruitment, and two, I'm not looking to hire EMT basics to just have EMT basics. I want to just try to use it as a recruiting tool with the condition that they would become paramedics. That's the proposal.
The EMT basics, will they just be on transport until they get their, their medic's license? Or are they going to be on regular Rescue 2, 3, 4?
No, so with, with no Rescue 10, one would go to one of the 911 trucks. They would be paramedic basic. And the other one, the Rescue 9 truck would be-
Now, it's my understanding, because I was around when we used to use EMT basics, as long as it was a medic on the truck, it was considered an ALS vehicle, correct?
Correct.
Now, if there was a high priority emergency call, we'd have to send, we'd now operate Squad 11.
Yes, the protocol, one, yes, we have Squad 11, but the state protocol is you, the medic would have to call for the second medic. In the protocol, it doesn't say the medic has to make it. Obviously, our department protocol is the medic will get there, but we would utilize Squad 11 for that second medic. If they were tied up, we'd use another truck if we had to. And during the day, we would use staff personnel.
Okay. All right. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadim.
Thank you. How many runs are we doing a year?
20. We've had 20, just over 24,000 responses last year.
So you, you would agree that there's a lot of runs for the city, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So for the life of me, I can't understand why we're getting first rights of refusal to transport people back. In terms of uncollectibles for EMS, where are we with some of these receivables? I mean, some of these receivables are uncollectible past, you know, 60, 90 days. So we're not recouping this. We're going to have to write this off, hits our free cash, all the, all this good stuff. So I mean, just, just to paint the picture of what happens. So every time that we, you know, go to a medical call, there's no guarantee that we're going to be getting the reimbursement.
On either side, though. You're absolutely right.
Right? So why would we then go to the hospital not knowing if we're going to get reimbursement and be in Uber or a Lyft back home or to another location when you have Brewster and all these other private ambulances that are available? Like, so, so I mean, next, next I'm going to hear is that the administration is allowing the police department to go pick up people from the House of Corrections when we send all our female detainees over there. So we're, we're now going to start sending police cruisers to Dartmouth to bring them back home? Like, it, it doesn't make any sense to me because now we've got a situation where we go to the hospital, right? Let's, so, and, and I apologize for, you know, the sky's falling, but this is real potential here, right? So we send one of our rescues to St. Anne's, and they've got to go somewhere else. So we get them into the, to the ambulance, and somewhere, let's just say it's Worcester, wherever you just said they came from. So when they're taking the individual out of the, the rescue, one of them, you know, tweaks a knee, goes out on F, 111F, right? Six months a year, whatever the case may be. What are we doing at that point? Because we did a, a transfer, right? So now we're down a person. This person's on unlimited sick leave because he's got 111F because it's injury on duty, right? So we got new vehicles. There could be a car accident, there could be wear and tear associated with it, you know?
EMS doesn't have the 111F.
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
111F, I'm used to the firefighters, but if we're making the shift to the, to the firefighters in the future-
If you're not out of base, you're correct. If a firefighter's in overtime, yes, that is a possibility.
So it, it just, to me, does not make any sense, other than it's, it's a money grab, right? To try to get some additional money from, from the-
It, it, the program is to, for another attempt to increase revenue for EMS and to have another program. It's called Continuance of Care. So the, the pro to it is that if we bring Mrs. Jones to the hospital, that we brought, we get to, you know, we bring her home. Does some of the, some of the residents, they, they like it. They think it's great. We're not looking to put any private services out of business. I'm not looking to, you know, have trucks not in service for 911. We have one truck for the return. If they're not available, it doesn't happen. We don't say-
I, I know, but it's just, when, when you look at the wear and tear and, and what, what our roles and responsibility is, I, I mean, I'd be curious to see how many other municipalities do this. I mean, we, we would, I, I would imagine that we would be hard-pressed to come up with 10 other communities that are, that are doing this, unless they're slow and they don't have the runs. The amount of runs that we do, I can't even believe we're even entertaining it, right? So it's just, you, we talk about, you know, trying to fill in overtime and just, you know, burnout, completely burnout, and then we're having people go back and doing, you know, potentially runs to, to either transport them to a, to a hospital, bring them home, or whatever the case may be. The other, the other piece is, we know what's coming down, oh, we, I shouldn't say we know what's coming down. We're anticipating what's coming down from the state in terms of these home visits, what they're going to want us to do. And, and I know communities are pushing back because municipalities don't want to have to then go in and try to, you know, be the sector that's going to help reduce the, the healthcare costs by going and visiting patients and making sure they're taking their medication and doing that because that's, that's what's coming down next, right? That's what we're struggling with at the state level, right?
The global degraded health program, yes.
So, so whether, whether that's the municipality that's going to be doing that, or is it going to be the visiting home nurses? You know, that's going to be another major issue. And here we are, we're just offering, offering up, you know, rides. And again, I, I just, collection rate, you know, injuries, wear and tear on the vehicles, to me, doesn't make any sense. And I can't believe we're doing it. I don't know what else to say. I mean, I, I clearly was sleeping for the last, you know, several years that this was going on, so I, I appreciate-
It started October 19, October 15. It's been a short time.
Okay, so I was only sleeping for a year, so it makes me, makes me feel a little bit better. So I do want to recognize and thank Counselor in seat six for bringing this up. I, I just think we need to address this. I don't know that it makes sense long-term for the services that we're providing, you know, because as it stands now, we're trying to be a little bit more efficient and effective with the services that we deliver to our residents, and I just, I don't know that that's one, and, and I'm sure they like it, right? Who wouldn't like getting a ride to, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not, it's one, it's the department doing it, the city. And two, they're not getting the co-pay that they would get from a private service. The co-pay for a private service on just a basic return from St. Anne's to Catholic Memorial Home is probably $1,200. For us, it's probably $260.
And, and I'll tell you, not to be the one without the heart, but I, I, I don't care that they don't have to pay a co-pay. You know what I'm saying? So to me, it's, that's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is if there's an emergency, we go to the emergency. If they need to get transported to a, a hospital that's not, you know, St. Anne's or Charlton, then I'm, I'm all for it. I get that. You know, we're going to Providence, Boston, whatever the case may be. Like, I, I can see that. But just, just to go back to the hospitals, to get somebody out of the hospital, doesn't make any sense. That's just me as one counselor, and, and as I, as I said, I'm just going to, I'm going to push back because it does not make sense. I, I can't wrap my head, head around that. I just can't.
I respect your, your position, Counselor, but even regardless of the return truck, we can discuss it more in ordinance. We can bring Mary and some of the, discuss it more with the new administration. Either way, whatever the decision may be, that's fine. However, I still need the EMT basic positions to staff the trucks.
And I agree with you. So I'm, I'm in favor 100% with the EMT basic because I understand the struggle that you, you have with trying to get these paramedics as long as it's, it's, as a stipulation for the position, right? So you bring somebody in, they've got a year, depending on what they have for, for education. So whether they have, you know, like you just said, 14 months or two years or even three years to get their paramedic license, like working towards it, in, in that period, they understand that they're probationary period, and, and there's some language in, in the collective bargain agreement that would allow the city to then say, "If you don't maintain a paramedic license, then you're not employed by the city." Like, I'm, I'm okay with that because I, I understand the recruitment process and that. The other piece, I just, I don't agree with, so.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Counsel. I'm going to acknowledge the two councils who want to speak, but I want to remind us that this is going to ordinance. So if we could just wrap up our questions so we continue our full counsel, that'd be great. Counselor on seats six, Counsel Peckham.
Just one other thing I forgot to ask. PB waiver.
There's a blanket waiver across the state for PB waivers. There's no more applying for PB waivers because of the paramedic shortage.
Okay.
That was about five years ago. That went away.
Was it ever discussed to take the 95 recruits that we now have that have their EMT basic? They work eight days a month. They do. It's, they work 24-hour shift.
So I, I can't speak for the fire side.
Well, I'm asking with you as the Director of EMS, have you had any discussions with the fire department or the fire department union about using those recruits?
Other than how, utilizing them for overtime, no.
Okay.
Because that, those discussions of-
I'm just trying to make sense of why we send them to get their EMT basic and then not utilize it.
I, I, I can't answer that, that question. The chief would have to answer that question for-
I, thank you for your time, Mr. Olivera. I appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Pereira.
Some of the questions I have, Tim. How is it that you're not getting all this money back?
So we-
I thought we had someone that did that, a company that was specifically doing that.
We do it. We actually do it in-house.
Right.
So we, you start billing out Medicare, Medicaid. Those are usually 90 days. But Blue Cross, Tufts, the private insurance companies, it could take up to 300 days to get a payment. So it's just a matter of us, we've built it out. We're just waiting to see exactly what the return is going to be.
So it's not that this was the total amount, and all we got was this amount. There is still money coming in.
No, absolutely.
The receivables still there.
They're still coming in, but I'll allude to Counsel on seat one. He's correct that we won't collect 100% of that, only because of mandates, people are exempt, co-pays. So we build out 108, but we will probably collect, conservatively, probably about 67% of that.
Now, the paramedic that's at Primate Care, are they in the walk-in clinic of Primate Care?
They're stationed in the walk-in, and they have all the equipment that Squad 11 would have, which would be a monitor, medication. So they're basically, it's an EMS substation. So when there's an emergency in the facility, they call him. He responds, and he calls for a rescue to respond immediately while he's getting to the patient. So it's an immediate care for the patient. There's no delay in care.
And what's the portion that Primate Care pays?
They're paying about 40% of his salary.
They're paying 40% of his salary. The city's paying 60%. Whose idea was that? Who brought, who brainstormed that? That we're going to give Primate Care, who makes a lot, a lot of money, we're going to have a paramedic that's there.
We're getting it in the, in the, in the transports, though. So when we go from 100-
Was that an idea that you had to put the paramedic there?
It was an idea that Primate Care approached me on, and then myself, Chief Lynch, went and had a discussion with them. And that's what we came up with.
I mean, they're a medical facility, and we have to have a paramedic there if there's an emergency, they don't know how to handle an emergency? I think that's ridiculous myself. Then you should have one at the South Coast Walk-In up on the avenue or have one anywhere else.
The, the urgent care actually has paramedics they hire themselves.
They hire themselves? I bet you they're paying 100% of that salary of that paramedic. We're not paying anything. Primate Care should be paying 100% of the salary, and they should be hiring their own person. What are we, going out subsidizing everything? That's ridiculous. I, I look at this, and I know that you need somebody. I understand that. But I've got to tell you too, for the amount of people in your department, you know, captains and lieutenants and whoever, there's a lot of top, top leverage there. And people get upset when they hear that, when they see that. You know, there's more people on top than at the bottom. I mean, how many chiefs do we need?
The, the lieutenant's positions there are actually out in the street. When you look at the, like, chart I gave you.
Well, I don't know. I just, I just have a problem with that. I mean, I, I really don't have much of a problem if someone is being transported somewhere else, and we know we're going to get paid for it. It's a city resident who ended up in a hospital and now needs to be transported to Boston. It's one of our residents. We provide a service, and we're going to get, going to get payment. Not 100%, but you're going to get some sort of payment, but... The one that got me was the paramedic at Primate Care. Like, Primate Care can't afford to hire their own paramedic. They had to come talk to us. Boy. These are the things that really infuriate people. I know it's small, but... I'm just astounded by that. I had no idea. Did that ever come before the council for them to approve that as well?
No.
I couldn't answer that, I don't believe so.
No, it never did.
Never did, and the council also, in October of 2019, when I was the acting mayor, never sent any kind of communication down to the city council in any way, shape, or form with respect to private transfers either. I don't know where that came from.
Well, I guess that was, that was that, and this is now, and we have to fix things. So my thing would be, let Primate Care pay for their own paramedic. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six.
Just one, I know you said the last question was the last question, but this will be the last question. In my line of work, I show up on a scene, I start to render medical service, right? And a doctor shows up. By state law, what happens? Higher precedent in medical care?
Move out of the way.
Exactly.
Yes, and, so if, if someone shows up on an emergency call in the street and they say they're a doctor, if they're willing to take responsibility for the patient and go with the patient in the, in the rescue, then yes.
All right, so perfect.
And they show credentials.
Now, in Primate Care, how many doctors are you estimating are at Primate Care?
Hundreds.
Hundreds. We got one medic. So if somebody drops on the floor, you're going to tell me there's not a doctor within 25 feet that is of greater medical service than that medic?
Not capable of working as a paramedic, no.
But what's the difference between working as a doctor and working-
We're emergency care specialists, they're hot specialists, they're-
They're still MDs.
Bone specialist, and they don't have the equipment we have. Absolutely not.
So Primate Care, the doctors at Primate Care don't have the medical equipment that Squad 11 carries around on the street?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That's interesting. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing nothing further. Thank you very much. The motion referred to ordinance has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Motion referred to ordinance, Madam Clerk, item five.
Item number five is a communication from the mayor and the employment agreement of the Director of Human Resources.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt is made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Counselor in seat one opposed, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Item number six A is the request for the confirmation of the appointment of Daniel Dupierre to the Board of Assessors. Um, excuse me, the Board of Appeals.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation of Dan Dupierre to the Board of Appeals has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Can we take six B, C, D, and E? Unless there's an issue with any.
I, I think there's some people who are here, so if we could just do them one by one, it's not going to take us long.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, congratulations, Mr. Dupierre. Madam Clerk.
Item six B is the appointment of Nancy Highnote to the Board of Assessors.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Kilby on the appointment of Nancy Highnote to the Board of Assessors, seconded by Counsel Kadim. Discussion. Counselor in seat three.
Just want to make a quick comment. This is a terrific appointment.
Yes.
Ms. Highnote comes with an abundance of experience. I worked with her. And congratulations and welcome aboard, once again.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
I would articulate the same thing that my colleague in seat number three did. That is a wonderful appointment. I'm delighted. Congratulations.
Thank you. And I also want to echo those sentiments as well. Ms. Highnote is an assessor in another community, I believe maybe retiring in the next couple of years or a year or so, maybe? No? Months? Two months?
No.
Two months. And she's going to give service back to the community that she's a part of, and we now have two assessors on our Board of Assessors. So, congratulations and best of luck. Motion has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Have the request for the appointment of Attorney Paul Machado to the Community Preservation Committee?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation of Attorney Paul Machado to the Community Preservation Committee has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All, Counselor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
Another great appointment.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Both Councilor Kilby and Councilor Pereira echoing the same sentiments. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Item six D is the Mayor's appointment of Councilor Linda Pereira to the tax increment financing board.
This one I may have a problem with.
I think it's a great appointment. Counselor in seat...
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation of Linda Pereira to the tax increment financing board has been made by Councilor Deion, seconded by Councilor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
The ayes have it. Congratulations.
I feel like I just want to...
Item six E is the Mayor's appointment of Dan Robillard to the Commission on Disability.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation of Dan Robillard to the Commission on Disability has been made by Councilor Deion, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Is Danny here, no?
He's not.
Great appointments.
Item seven A is the reappointment of John Brandt to the Community Preservation Committee.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Item seven B is the reappointment of Carolyn Morissette to the Board of Appeals.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation of Carolyn Morissette to the Board of Appeals has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
The reappointment of Kristen Cantara Olivera to the Historical Commission?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation of Kristen Olivera to the Historical Commission has been made by Councilor Deion, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion. I just want to say congratulations and thank you for your continued service on this board. Has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Item seven D is the reappointment of Kristen Cantara Olivera to the Community Preservation Committee. She is the Historical Commission's designee.
To adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
And lastly, item seven E is the request for confirmation of the reappointment of Dennis Procelli as a member of the Commission on Disability.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the confirmation of Dennis Procelli to the Commission on Disability has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Deion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances?
Motion to ordinance.
Motion referred to ordinance has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, through the Board of Registration and Pharmacy and the Drug Control Program, advises Massachusetts pharmacists and pharmacies that a prescriber may order in, a pharmacy may sell stock supply of non-patient-specific epinephrine by auto-injector for use at a Massachusetts public or private school for emergency treatment of severe allergic reactions. And whereas the Board of Registration and Pharmacy and Drug Control Program strongly support all prescriber and pharmacy efforts to provide stock epinephrine in a pre-measured auto-injector device to Massachusetts public and private schools to facilitate treatment of anaphylaxis reactions. And whereas there are students enrolled in the Fall River School System who suffer from life-threatening allergies which require that they supply their own auto-injector device, commonly referred to as an EpiPen. And whereas the Fall River School Department does not provide stock epinephrine to facilitate emergency treatment, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth, and Elder Affairs convene with the School Department, Chief Financial Officer, the Fall River Nursing Department Director, and the Fall River Board of Health Physician to discuss this matter.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion. Counselor in seat two, the sponsor of the resolution, Counselor Lydia.
Thank you. I submitted this resolution because children and elders are the most vulnerable members of our community. I'm hopeful that we can facilitate a program that will ensure the safety of our children who suffer from life-threatening allergies by instituting this. We've also heard recently that 70% of our children are at poverty level, so this would also remediate a financial hardship for all, not just those in that 70 percentile. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd just like to point out, Clara, more of an acknowledgement to you. I know this is something that you've been working on and doing a ton of due diligence on as well. In addition to that, you're also Chair of this committee, which hasn't met in a very long time, and I know one of your goals, as we've met together, that you really want to get this committee back up and running and functional. So, congratulations and thank you for this. Motion has been made to adopt. Hearing any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas a Fall River resident presented the attached letter to the Fall River City Council with multiple public safety concerns and ordinance violations regarding her property located at 28 Cookishant Street, now therefore be resolved that the property owner, all involved parties, and city departments be invited to a future meeting of the City Council Committee on Public Safety to address her concerns.
To adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion, the Counselor who sponsored the resolution. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
The resident of, well, the owner of the property reached out to me, and I know that she reached, she informed me, she reached out to all the city councillors as well. My advice to her was to put together a comprehensive, detailed description of what was going on because there was multiple complaints about public safety and ordinances. She put the ordinance in this correspondence as well as the violations. I feel that, and I also went to the police department and got a printout of all her calls about the properties around her. So, she's put a lot of effort into this. She put a lot of effort into trying to find resolutions beyond coming to the council. But I, you know, after talking to her, I said, well, we'll give it our best shot. We'll try to move it to public safety and see if we can come to a resolution. So, I would appreciate, you know, passing this down to the Subcommittee. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor, do you know if this is a vacant property?
No.
No, no. She owns it.
It's an occupied property in this area.
Yeah, she owns it, and it has a, she has a driveway. But if you see the printout there, there's, she shares that driveway. She owns it, but that, there's three lots that go along the side of it. So, people sometimes will park, but they'll stick their car out. They can't get their car through. When there's snow, you can see there's huge piles of snow. Some people just shove the snow right in front of her door. She's, along with that, there's noise problems. There was, she had suspect people staying on her property. She's made multiple phone calls to the police department about it. She was even told by a police officer to, that she may not want to go out there because she might end up, like, dead in the parking lot, you know? So, she's just, she's just been tried, she's trying very, very hard to go through all the channels that she's supposed to go through. I'm just saying it. I'm just saying it, Counselor. She's tried very hard to go through all the channels she's supposed to be going through, and she's gotten nowhere, and so she came to the City Council.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. And I, just as a point of moving forward, this, I mean, looking at these pictures, there's some serious amounts of trash and debris. Madam Clerk, I think it'd be appropriate to assist before the public safety meeting meets, get this over to Minimum Housing as well.
Yep.
Get that department down here.
I haven't yielded yet, though. I just wanted to say another thing. I was advised that going with the public safety route, they could actually have the meeting near the site at Bishop Ead, the apartment building there. They have an area there where they've had public safety meetings before. So, if you want to get people in that area to be involved in the conversation, you can.
Sure, but I, it was just giving us a suggestion, Counselor, that if it's a public safety concern, that's, I think you should acknowledge it in that committee, absolutely. But if there's trash, like, it's built up here...
Absolutely.
I think we need to get Minimum Housing down there to do an inspection right away and find if anybody needs to be fined. Counselor in seat five, four, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Yeah, I had spoke to Counselor in seat five about this one after the email came through, knowing that he had gone out there on a Sunday afternoon, I believe, to meet with this property owner and let him know to ask the police department for all the calls to that area and to reach out to Minimum Housing, which I think that he might have already done that. But if the clerk would please do that again, the issue that we have is Minimum Housing will be able to get a little further than we have, we are as far as the trash. But as far as the driveway, it's a private driveway that's shared by multiple buildings. So, it's going to be up to the other property owners as well. So, that's something that we're going to want to have to address before the meeting is to find out who those other property owners are, and Minimum Housing can help us with that, too. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Because, I mean, if it's on private, there might not be a lot that we can do about it if it's these tenants causing issues. It's going to be a police issue.
And a Minimum Housing issue, for sure.
Yep.
Counselor in seat six, Councilor Peckham.
I recently spoke to Madam Secretary about coming up with a date for a public safety Subcommittee meeting. I think it's a great idea to actually have it located in the general vicinity of that residence. I'm looking at maybe the first or second meeting somewhere around March for the public safety, and if we can, please invite the owner of this property to attend. With that, I yield.
Thank you very much. Counselor in seat eight, would you like to speak on this? Counselor in seat eight, Counselor.
Yeah, I've got to tell you, this woman has, I had the opportunity to speak with her myself, and she is not getting any help from anybody. But we do have nuisance property ordinances on the book, and these properties in front, it's a whole row of houses right across from Bishop Ead, and there's nothing but problems. I can't tell you how many summoners I've served there in my past life, but the landlord of those properties really needs to take some responsibility. But the nuisance ordinances we have should be looked at as well. And I think it's a great idea to bring it forward to public safety, but it saddens me that this woman calling and contacting agencies within the city or law enforcement, that she has found no resolution for this. And I think the police officer was right in telling her, be careful when you go out. Be careful because this is a rough little section here. I wish that he didn't have to tell her that, but I think he was advising her appropriately. So, I'm glad to see that Counselor Lee has moved this forward, but it saddens me that we have to be dealing with this and not the agencies that should be. But thank you for bringing this forward. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
I do have the copies of all the calls. I would like to bring it up to the clerk, and then maybe she can make copies for everyone here or at least for the people on the Public Safety Committee. And we, you know, we got elected to help people. So, I, I mean, we talk about, like, the roads and all this and that, but when people, like, give us direct calls, I know there's councillors here that have made, you know, careers out of helping people that directly call them. And it's just important that I think we do that as well, so. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. The motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'd like to congratulate both of my colleagues and file on their first resolution.
Yeah.
Very good ones as well, so.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Do we have a citation?
Motion to adopt the citation has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the police chief's report?
Motion to adopt that police chief's report be appropriate?
Motion.
Has been made by Council Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Councilor Deion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Any from police, police reports on them?
Yep, they've all been approved.
All been approved? Thank you.
The motion to adopt all auto repair shop license renewals has been made by who?
Me.
Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have applications for the renewal of auto body shop licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt the renewal has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Number of claims?
Version of...
Motion referred to Cooperation Council has been made by Councilor Pelletier, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Just to bring out a point, that one of my colleagues had spoken about the reservation in that area and the, well, one of them, paddles, was from up in the reservation area. So, we got rid of some of them, then we would have less claims to come in. It's all paddle claims. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Motion referred to Cooperation Council has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have an open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins regarding January 14th council meeting.
Motion referred to Cooperation Council. Motion to refer to Cooperation Council be appropriate?
Motion.
Motion to refer to Cooperation Council has been made by Council Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Councilor Deion. Discussion. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
The only thing that I look at with this new complaint is the complaint is that when things come down, like all the appointments we just did, that there's no addresses. Is there an issue with giving an address?
Counselor, we have a, we have a legal opinion that we've had that...
Is that from Chrissy Diaria?
Yes.
Okay. Because, I mean, other, I was talking to a colleague in the, on the New Bedford side, and I said, hey, do you, no, no, we put the addresses. So, I don't know. I just, it drives me crazy when we get all these open meeting law complaints and violations for this and that. And like, I don't want to go through getting them a lot, what's going on, and what can we do to rectify them to stop this. If we could rectify that, I mean, I personally don't care if, if somebody wants to get ahold of somebody that's on the Board of Assessors.
We do have contact information.
You know, you could then call and you'd give an address if I wanted to write a letter.
We have, we do have a way to contact members.
Just what I wanted to know. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor.
I do.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lee.
So, I was just going to go down the same lines. So, we have a, do you have the legal opinion with you or?
I don't know. I did send it in an email.
Yeah, it was communicated email. It was from Attorney Diaria when she was here.
Do you recall what, what the opinion was?
It was pretty much redacting the information as we have in these...
For what purpose, though? Like, I can understand the public safety, so police, fire, things like that, you wouldn't...
I don't remember the specific content. I just know...
I mean, for a board, it's, it's no different than an elected official. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. We just appointed Linda Pereira. I mean, her, her address has to be listed because she's an elected official, but we've got boards who are, you know, people that are volunteering to be on boards. I don't understand why we would...
And I just want to say, and I know you would probably agree, I think the administration is, is following the legal opinion from Attorney Diaria when she was here.
Yeah.
The, the last two administrations...
We get a new legal opinion, plus.
Yeah.
Fair enough. We'll get a new legal opinion. If you can point that to the Cooperation Council, too, Madam Clerk, to get us a legal opinion. This is getting referred to his office anyway, and then maybe provide an updated legal opinion to the City Council would probably be appropriate.
I know that he is working on it this time.
He is working on it, fair enough. Counselor, you yield?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in Seat Five, Counsel.
I mean, I would just be willing to make a motion, yes, that we put the addresses out there, boom.
So moved.
So moved.
I actually have no, I have nothing, I yield the floor.
You yield the floor? Okay. There's a motion by the City Council to no longer redact addresses for appointment letters sent down to the City Council that has been made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Kadim. Is there discussion on that item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This is still being referred to Corporation Council, so let's do that. Motion has been made. If we can remake that motion again to be correct, to refer to Corporation Council, because we just entertained another motion.
Yeah, that motion superseded Corporation Council's motion. We're not giving him work, in other words.
So you're not going to refer it to Corporation Council?
We still need to refer this because it's an open meeting law.
Yeah, so let's answer the complaint.
That's a second one.
Is there a motion to refer to Corporation Council?
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by Counsel Vice President LaBeau, seconded by Counsel Deion. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
An open meeting law complaint filed by Colin Dias regarding January 10th alleged violation.
Let's refer to the Corporation Council.
Second. Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Peckham. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the zoning board of appeals.
Motion accepted, place on file.
Motion to accept the zoning board of appeals minutes has been made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Peckham. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Minutes of the City Council meeting from January 6th.
Motion accepted, place on file.
Motion to accept the minutes of the City Council's committee, City Council Organization Government Meeting on January 6th has been made and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 21 is a communication from the Department of Public Utilities regarding a petition to be heard on March 4th.
Motion to accept, place on file, be appropriate. Motion to accept, place on file, has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Peckham. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on February 10th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted. This is the order granting permission to 64 Stevens Street LLC for storage of 48,000 gallons of gasoline underground at 64 Stevens Street.
Motion to adopt committee's report.
Motion to adopt the committee's report has been made by Counsel Pereira. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Vice President LaBeau. Is there discussion? Counselor in Seat One, Counsel Kadim.
Were there any restrictions that were placed on this that went through regulations?
No, we, if I may.
Counsel Kilby.
We had the meeting obviously last night, and I think as you articulated the last meeting, Counselor, our, our role strictly was to, for tank approval, so we, we, you know, rendered our decision based on the Fire Chief, Chief Lynch, and he, you know, supports the, the placing of the tanks at that location, and went over some, you know, virtually had no, no safety issues. So that, that was really what we, we acted upon, just that recommendation. We didn't really get into any of the other issues that were not within our purview.
All right. Just based on that information, I'm not personally going to support it. I just think the only leverage we have is, is this license, the underground storage license that we have. My concern is, too, well, I know there's a lot of complaints coming from, from the neighbors. I don't necessarily disagree with Cumberland Farms going into that facility. I, I think the project itself is, is a little excessive in terms of having a car wash there and everything else. So if there's, I, I would personally like to see a stipulation saying that this would be granted as long as there was no car wash there, so we can at least minimize, you know, the hot egg that some of the residents have over there. That's, that's what I would do. Without any regulations, I'm just going to vote no on this. I mean, stipulations, not regulations, stipulations.
I would just add that, no, I, I agree. I agree with that, but it's not within our authority to do so. It's not within, you know, the Subcommittee Regulations to, to impose those conditions, so.
That's all. Thank you. Your point of information, Counselor, or have you been just, okay. Thank you. Counselor in Seat Seven, Counsel Pelletier.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, as far as the car wash goes, I think they're going to have enough cars there already and enough business between the coffee and the gas and lottery tickets and everything else. I think the car wash should be washed out. But what is the next step for them? Do they have to go in front of the planning board, or?
They've already been before the planning board.
And they didn't, they didn't put no hours on them or nothing?
That's what they said at the last meeting, Counselor. There was, there was, there was a number of.
What, what timeframe do they have? Do they give them a timeframe?
I mean, the attorney that represents the entity is here. If you want to call him down, waive the rules. I will tell you that at the last City Council meeting that we had, Mr. Roth was here. He confirmed that there were stipulations with respect to the planning board that they needed to meet. Whether they've met those expectations or not, I don't know, but I will tell you that they did go before the planning board, and they've gone through quite a, quite a process. You have a point of information, Counselor?
I do, because I asked that of Mr. Roth yesterday at the meeting, and he said they didn't go before the planning board. What they went before was the, the site plan review. That's the only board that they went before. It was site plan review, not the planning board. Because it's considered commercial, industrial, all they needed was the review. And what I did was I did speak to the, the people that were here from Cumberland Farms and said, you know, there's a concern with this gas station, the level of noise, et cetera. You know, it shouldn't be open 24 hours a day. And I said, we had a problem on Globe Street with the gas, they get out of the club at 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning, somebody's sick, they have to go wash a car, and they're loud and obnoxious, and people have their windows, that was awful. But they did say that the, this car wash has doors, so when your car goes in, the door shuts. So you're not going to have as much noise that there's always a manager on site, but that they would meet with the neighbors and come up with a solution. They didn't have to be open 24 hours. But the key is, he said, the one we did in New Bedford, we had a stipulation. Well, why do we have this site review plan? This site review plan that they have, we really need to bring that to ordinance. I'll put in a resolution in two weeks for us to do that. Because that plan was supposed to be, the plan comes in, we all sit around the table, water, sewer, conservation, building, everybody. No, this plan goes via email. I'm on building, I look at it when I have a chance to do it. Counsel Pelletier's conservation, he looks at it when he has a chance. Counsel Peckham's engineering, he looks at it when he, that's crazy. And they're not sitting there all together looking at what's to be done. And the reason, had it gone to zoning or plant, people would have gotten more notification. The only notification that they got was one over, which was the bank next door. They didn't really care. And I know the people on Bad Street don't want that entrance coming in on that side. We talked about that yesterday, too, with Cumberland Farms. But I, I believe that Cumberland Farms was willing to make some sort of compromise along with the site plan review board. That's the impression that they gave. And perhaps if the attorney is here, he could shed some light on that.
You want to move motion, and I, and I stand corrected. I could have swore I heard planning board, but maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding.
No, I thought I did, too, but what he said was the plan review.
Site plan review.
So that might have gotten you confused.
Motion to waive the rules. Point of order, a plan review is different than a site plan review. So site plan reviews are done by planning board. So that's, so if it's just a plan review, I mean, it's like a technical review committee from, from all the departments, but, you know, I won't speak to that, but that's just.
It was the site plan review that looked at it. Everybody looked at it.
Do we have questions?
Motion to waive the rules.
Second. Has been made by Counsel Deion, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Well, the gentleman's coming down. Can I get a point of information? Why can't the City Council put regulations on licenses that's no different than any other license we put on? How's that outside our purview?
I, I don't know that, that, that it is.
Okay.
I, I believe that it is our responsibility. This is just my opinion, and Madam Clerk, if you want to weigh in, if the Regulations Committee or if the City Council has the authority to grant the, the, the storage facility, we could absolutely, in my opinion, put regulations in place with respect to the gallons that are going in and what it's going to become as a result of that.
Right.
So I mean, that's just my, my opinion. I don't know if, if Corporation Council weighed in on this or not, but it's just my opinion respectfully.
And I, and I just, and I think that's my understanding, and that's what I would argue that we can do as, as a council. I, I would just say that while we have the gentleman here, listen, Cumberland Farms wants to have a gas station and, and a food source. If we put right stipulations that they can't have a gas station, Cumberland Farms is still going to open up. I don't know, I don't know many Cumberland Farms that have gas stations around here. I, I mean, like, gas stations, car washes, so there, there's nothing to prevent us from doing that. And then if we're concerned about the hours, which I, I personally am, then we just put in there a stipulation that it's not to be open 24 hours. And then we, you let the city work it out with Cumberland Farms and licensing as to what their hours of operation would be, whether that's 10:00 or 11:00. I just think this is the only opportunity we have as a council to put in any type of stipulations, because this license runs with the property owner, so they're not coming back before us. This is our last bite of the apple, and I think, you know, we talk about trying to protect our, our residents and citizens. I think that's a fair compromise. I, I think they're a great development. I'd like to see that parcel get developed, but I, I, again, 24 hours and a car wash is a little excessive for my, for my liking.
Counselor in Seat Seven, you still have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Staffed room, we had a problem up there. They want to open at 6:00 and close 11 or 12:00. And they come in front of the committee, and we said, no, it's 7:00 to 10:00, and that was it. And I think for us to be sitting here, and they're going to come in, and they're going to put a car wash, I don't want a car wash there. I don't think they want it either. It's a little too much noise and too much business. And it's up to us to do what we have to do to make sure that, all right, you got the gas station, that's enough. And I don't think they should open till 12:00. I think 10:00 is enough. The residents are 100, 150 feet away. It's just a bad spot. You know, if they get it, so be it. I think the time, 7:00 to 10:00, that's what we should insist, with no car wash. And so I don't know if that can work out, or Cumberland Farms, maybe can bend a little bit if they want, they want to go there. But that's how I feel. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in.
Could he state his name?
Counselor in Seat Four, Counsel Vice President LaBeau, followed by Counsel in Seat Three.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor in Seat One. I, I think this is our only opportunity. It's a shame that the site plan review didn't take this into consideration. I know when they were before us, before, no one was able to tell us if there were hours that were agreed upon. Have there been hours that are agreed upon?
No.
Could he, I don't know your name, sir.
If you can state your name.
For the record, Michael Keough, Partridge, Snow and Han, on behalf of the applicant Cumberland Farms.
So I remember Mr. Roth saying we'd have to, if, if there was any changes made by sending this to Regulations, we'd have to reopen the site plan review. However, how can the site plan review be closed if hours have not been agreed upon?
Well, we, we never had a discussion because it was never brought before us. We complied with the Regulations of the City of Fall River and site plan review. Site plan review took four months.
So, but you still don't, I'm sorry.
We went through four months of complete review, traffic studies, everything you name it, and we got a list of stipulations from the Board of Health, excuse me, from the planner after the site plan review that said, approved with these conditions, and it was a page and a half of conditions.
So nothing on anything, agreement says anything about hours of operation?
There was nothing.
That's, that's the fault of the city. I'm, I'm sorry. That doesn't make any sense to me. I don't think anybody on this council, I'll speak for myself, but I don't think anybody's against Cumberland Farms going in this location. I think that the fact that there's no hours on the establishment itself and the car wash, I remember you saying you wanted 24 hours of the conditions.
Yes.
I'm, I'm okay with a car wash, but I would, I would like to see a closing time on that. I don't think people want to hear that in the middle of the night, especially when they're, they're so close. And the other thing I wouldn't want to see in the middle of the night would be the deliveries of gas. I don't know how loud it is when they're delivering gas, but I don't think that I want to see that at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. I know you don't want them at peak hours, and I, I understand that, but I think that we should have maybe a limit on that as well. And I heard Counselor in Seat Seven, I don't think that 7:00 AM is, is early enough, quite honestly. I, I think people are up and about earlier. I think the one in the North End opens earlier than 7:00. Most places open at least at 6:00. I'd be okay with that, but as far as a car wash and the truck deliveries, and shame on the city for not having any indication of what time this business is going to be open. That, that just means that you could open anytime, whatever you want.
That, correct, that is correct. We, when we put our application in, indicated we were going 24/7. There were no conditions on that. That were, that came back.
Yep.
Okay, so that was the review process for the entire project. That's what, that's what site plan review is supposed to be. And then we went before conservation because we have a portion of the driveway that, excuse me, the parking area that's in the buffer zone, or not anywhere near the wetlands, but in the buffer. And so that was certainly something that we, again, provided engineering for, and after consideration, conservation felt we were not going to have a negative impact on the wetlands. But that being said, what I did promise at the last meeting before you was that I would talk with my client, and we were hearing what was being said, okay? There is, but I want to be one, be very clear. One thing is very clear. You're right, there aren't that many car washes with Cumberland Farms. Reason being, it's relatively new component of a standard Cumberland Farms. They implemented that roughly about a year, a year and a quarter ago. There's not any new Cumberland Farms that they're building without one. So without it, then the project's off. I mean, that's just the way it is.
I'm not opposed to the car wash. I just think it needs some hours.
The hours of operation, as I mentioned, we did have a great dialogue with the City of New Bedford on one that's being built now. And we agreed, and we'd be willing to offer to the City of Fall River the exact same terms, because I heard what Counselor Pereira, I was going to say Seat Seven, but I'm not sure what number you're at.
I mean.
We, you know, mentioned last evening, and I, I heard what some of the neighbors who came before you said. So the hours of operation for the car wash in New Bedford was limited, starting, opening at 5:00 AM, closing at 10:00 PM. So.
Good.
That makes sense, yeah. And that's what we'd be willing to offer, you know, on behalf of Cumberland Farms, limiting the car wash operation. And Counsel Pereira was correct. This car wash has two bays. One is touchless, one is, they call it gentle or soft touch, but one is brushless, one has some brushes. When you drive in, the garage door opens, car goes in, the garage door closes. There's garage doors on each side. When the cycle's over, the garage door to let you out opens, and out you go. At no point will the car wash be operational without the manager of the store present. So we're not, it's not going to be one of those coin operators with nobody there, and you can wash your car at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. We have a very strict policy at Cumberland Farms relative to security. So if you have people that are coming and being disruptive, even if they're not in the car wash, the protocol is to immediately call 911, notify Central, which is in Westboro, okay? And those folks will immediately take response. Our goal is to have a facility that is not a danger for the customers and the neighbors. We don't want that. In fact, one of the features that was on a few Cumberland Farms, you might see them around, was outdoor seating. And in, in the new Cumberland Farms, it's basically been eliminated because we're concerned about trash security. We were monitoring. We had cameras that would actually allow the manager or anybody in the store to see what was happening, but we take that very seriously, okay? We also take the noise issue very seriously. So we feel that, you know, we want to work with the city, we want to work with the neighbors, and we're trying to do something that would be reasonable and appropriate.
Do they have any limitations on their gas delivery times?
The gas deliveries are, no, they're not limited. They had no limited on, on deliveries, but the gas deliveries are usually made during the daylight hours, not in the middle of the night. But we try to get them in the mid-morning, mid-afternoon, where we don't have our peak, with people coming in to buy fuel and coffee, et cetera. So that's usually when they're made. Some could be made a little bit, like maybe at 7:30 or something like that, but as far as I know, they don't have deliveries that are going to go past like 12:00 at night or something, unless the truck was way late on the highway with a, with a problem. The deliveries for food, similarly, although you might have some of those earlier in the morning, particularly with the fresh products, they're usually in panel vans. They're not tanker truck, obviously. I, I mentioned at the last meeting, the storage on site is significantly increased from the old stores, so the deliveries are less frequent.
I remember very clearly your presentation of the last meeting that you want a very nice, clean facility, well lit. The lighting changes at nighttime.
Correct.
You still want to appear open. The landscaping is all done because you want people to go there. I don't think anybody is, is disagreeing with the Cumberland Farms. Counsel President, is there a way that we can vote on this with an amendment stipulation that they adopt the 5:00 to 10:00 PM of the car wash time?
I, I don't see a reason why we can't adopt it with the conditions.
Because I don't want to send these poor people back to a committee.
There's no sense in, I mean, there's, if you want to refer it back to committee, I mean, the committee did the work. You're, you have to leave it on that.
May I?
Sure, but I, I don't, I don't see.
I wouldn't be offended at all as Chairman of the Committee if we want to table this rule to, in order for, you know, Corporation Council to draw up something in writing. I don't want to do this on the fly. I mean, I think all these issues are very important.
Yeah, and, and the questions raised, whether or not we can and can't do what we talked about is important, too. So I mean, it's, it's up to you if you want. I don't, I don't see an issue with adopting it with a stipulation.
We could be adopted with a stipulation and send it to Corporation Council. I don't want to hold this up any longer. I understand the concern, but if we can say yes and then send it, and if there's a problem, he can send it back?
Yeah.
Sure. Let's just be clear.
Yeah, I'd be favored tabling for now Senator Corporation Council, get his opinion whether we have the authority to do that. I mean, obviously, they're cooperating with us, so I don't think there's going to be any issues if.
All right. We, we're talking about two different things, so let's not confuse ourselves. We can adopt it with, 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 with conditions, or we can table it, wait for a legal app. legal opinion, and then see it back at our full council in two weeks.
Well, if we, if we adopt it with the conditions and the Corporation Council says yes, we're go. If we table it and send it and wait, we're still waiting two more weeks to come back where they might have an answer in, in just a couple of days.
I, I, I mean, whatever the council wants to do, I mean, there's a lot of unanswered questions here. Uh, some councilors are taking the position that we can't do something, some would say we can't, that we're not sure about a legal opinion, our Corporation Council's not here. Uh, we want to do what's right. I think it's right, I mean, it's up, it's up to you. But I think it's appropriate to table it, have it back at the next meeting, invite Corporation Council down to the table, have an opinion, and in the meantime, do it. I mean, because adopting it and then waiting on an opinion, I see your hand, Counselor, adopting and waiting on an opinion is just adopting and waiting on an opinion. It's totally up to you. Uh, you still have the floor. But you can make a motion.
I would make a motion to, uh, adopt it with an amendment that the car wash time is open five AM to ten PM.
Amendment stating that the car wash only is what?
Five AM to ten PM.
Five AM to ten PM.
Second.
Motion has been made to adopt with an amendment that the car wash stay open between five AM and ten PM has been made by Council Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion on the motion to adopt, Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kilby.
Yes, the gentleman also stated the condition in New Bedford was hours of operation were?
For the car wash.
It was the car wash.
That, that particular location, the convenience store and gasoline is twenty-four seven. The car wash is limited.
I want to ask something.
Thank you.
You yield, Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor.
I just want to ask something. How long have you been working with the city of Fall River on this project?
Uh, six months perhaps.
This is unbelievable. You want economic development in this city and you've got a company like Cumberland Farms, we all know who Cumberland Farms is, and we wait six months? Is this what this site plan review was about? Six months is ridiculous. I'm in favor of passing for the, the tanks, the storage tanks with the stipulation of the hours of operation for the car wash. If they see that there's a problem with that, they'll contact. You know, or they'll meet, have you meet to sign something that, that's the stipulation. If not, it's going to go to committee, it's going to come back here in another two weeks, that's another two-week delay. I'm really pushing for economic development. And this is crazy that we've six months to put a Cumberland Farms? Come on. Come on.
Counsel, just, just so you know, and I spoke to the city planner at length about this, there was a detailed traffic study that was done, there were revisions that were sent back to Cumberland Farms to make amendments to. The city signal department, um, commented that they needed to adjust some signals, that got sent back. So it, I, I don't necessarily think it was the city sitting on its hands. There were a number of revisions from site plan review that had Cumberland Farms, and the attorney who's here representing them could, could adhere to that because that's what the city planner told us at the last meeting. So there, there was a lot of work done with Cumberland Farms and, and site plan review to get to where we're at now, but for some reason, we missed the hours. So that's not on us, that's on site plan review. So I'm just telling you what the city planner told me.
No, look, I have a, a man who has a business here in Fall River, looking for a piece of land in Fall River, it's been about a year. He sent to South Carolina, this is my business, this is what I need. They sent him, within three weeks, they sent him copies of lots, plot plans of lots that they had available, they sent him what the tax rate was, what the water rate was, what the sewer rate was. They sent him everything in three weeks. And over here, he waited all this time? Come on. I understand they did all of this review and work, that's what they're supposed to do. But to say six months, that's a long time. I'm sorry. Maybe I'm more, you got to do a job, get on your horse, do it, ride it, let's go. That's where I'm at. And this gets very frustrating. So I agree with my, uh, Council Vice President that we send this with the stipulations. I think we have the attorney here who's agreeing that these stipulations will be upheld by the parties that you represent. And if there is a problem, Corporation Council can tell us and we can meet, but at least there's been a vote taken here.
Thank you, Counselor.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilman in seat one, Counselor Kilby.
Thank you. I, I can appreciate the comments that we want economic development, but this is not a usual timetable and Cumberland Farms is used to it. It's not just Cumberland Farms, it's everywhere else. Um, they're located next to the wet area, uh, the wetlands, so you got to look at the buffer, you got to go to conservation, there's posting, there's applications that need to be submitted, um, review, planning, zoning, all kinds of things and you probably didn't need zoning for it, but this is a typical, just for business. I mean, it's not unusual. I, I think what happens is if we rush these things through, we end up like Northeast, uh, Solutions with the marijuana where we've got, we've got a commercial property that's on, on a commercial way, but it butts a residential prop, um, you know, residential neighborhood. And then we've got all these issues because we didn't ask the right questions, the time of the operation, you know, traffic study. So I, I applaud Cumberland Farms. I, I think Cumberland Farms projects are great projects, I think they do a phenomenal job. However, I personally think, again, as I stated before, I, I think the car wash is overkill and, and is excessive from my, my standpoint. Now, the gentleman that's standing before us is telling them, telling us that's their new business model. Okay, so I, I appreciate that Cumberland Farms is going to try to capture as much as they possibly can in their area. I just, you know, we've, we've got residents who are complaining about the size, the traffic, um, you know, the congestion, the noise. So those are the types of things that I, I personally want to have a, a conversation about to make sure that we get it right. You know, we get economic development right and we get, you know, the residential concerns of, of our residents, right? So because we, we want to have that partnership and, and I understand, you know, there, there are going to be people that complain no matter what, right? You know, whether it's the lighting, it's the noise, we have to find the balance. That, that's where I come from. So, um, you know, I just, when you stop looking at how congested that area is from a residential standpoint, you know, do I, do I think they're going to just pack up because they don't get a car wash? No, I don't think so. Maybe I'm wrong, right? He could, he, I could be way off on his bluff, right? There, that is a prime location for a Cumberland Farms. Easy access to the highway, and I mean, right there, right? Because I mean, you go to, you go to Somerset, you've, you've got to go off from the highway, so it's, it's quite a ways away from the highway. But this one's easy access, twenty-four is right there to one ninety-five, so I mean, the location is good. We just need to find the balance. I, I personally can't support just the, the car wash, so I, I won't be moving forward with that. I think the, you know, if, if you can get a stipulation about what the hours are, that's fine, that's a win. I personally won't support it. But if we're going to have conversations, I just got a question for you in terms of operations, so we're not guessing. The Cumberland Farms facilities that you represent, do you know what the normal hours of operations are if they're outside of, if they're not twenty-four hours? Typical is it?
Well, the, the new ones that have been built are all twenty-four seven.
So the ones that aren't?
The ones that aren't are usually raise and rebuild, where there's already been limitations put on the hours of operation. And the raise and rebuilds, uh, because they won't buy, Cumberland Farms won't buy a piece of land to put up a store with limited hours now. That's just their, that's what they're doing. And, and I know you think I'm bluffing on the car wash, but believe it or not, that's the business model. And, 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 you know, it, they won't do it. I mean, they, they've had opportunities in other communities and they've walked from those proposals.
That's fine, but.
Just so you know, so it's, it's, it's your call, I mean.
And I, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I, I know you were in C-COCH, you know, that you got, you folks were ready to do a limited, limited hours there and limited, um, tanks.
That's right, because, and I remember that, we didn't get the tanks approved and they walked.
Yep.
And even though I think in that jurisdiction, we would have had a good, very good case, we weren't going to wait, because we still had to go through conservation.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you. But what I'm saying is, is, is that it's not unusual for a new build to have limited hours is, is where I'm going, so.
You may be right, but, and, and also in, in C-COCH, we didn't have a car wash, that was before their new business model.
Yeah, but that's fine. The, the car wash, I, I, I'm not debating the car wash piece, that's just me personally. Again, I mean, there are a number of residential homes that are right behind it. I mean, single families, it's not like we've seen, uh, before, you know, some of the, some of the, some of the developments we've seen have been next to mills, right? And it's not residential homes. And, and we, we talk about trying to bring in the middle class back in and, and, you know, bolster some of our residential neighborhoods. We've got the concern again, and I, I know we had traffic concerns with, you know, the charter schools. So I'm just curious though, if, if you have a sense of the operations, the hours of operations, is it a five o'clock, is it a six o'clock, is it in the morning to, to ten, eleven?
I'm not familiar with the existing stores that were, like I say, raise and rebuild. I know what they're doing on their model. Okay, their business model, uh, and it, and you probably know Cumberland Farms was sold from a private family to a large company. And so that, that's what the business model is now. I don't know if they would even entertain it if it were something less than twenty-four seven. I don't want to say that they would, because I don't know. I just know that the new ones that have been built, that are either finished or in the process of being constructed are all twenty-four seven. And the only pushback we had, um, in New Bedford was on the car wash. They have, um, two that, that I was involved with there. The first one had no car wash. Frankly, it was before this new plan, but secondly, it's one of the smallest lots and one of the smallest stores. So there was very little, it was the location of the old Shawma Diner. It was a very small lot.
So just in terms, so everybody knows where I stand, I'm, I'm not supporting it because of the car wash. And I would just say that if we're going to bring it back, that we should probably do some research in terms of the hours of operation. Uh, because the last thing I want to do is I, I don't want to hinder Cumberland Farms if their norm is like five to ten. I, I think we should be consistent if it's not a twenty-four hour store. That's, that's the only thing if we're going to put restrictions on, on the hours. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, I kind of have an issue with the car wash as well in terms of, all car washers have vacuums. Vacuums are very loud. For me, ten o'clock, being right next to those homes is too late. Just my opinion. The other thing I'd like to address is moving forward, if, if we don't have the, the ability to set hours, then we're the last stop on the trail. So everything should be in a concise package once it reaches here. So those discussions, I think moving forward need to, need to happen and we need to have all the information before we're asked to, to vote on anything. And then at the last meeting, I believe it was Vice President that stated, you know, why don't the, why aren't the neighbors involved in the conversations prior to, even though they, they know it's, it's, uh, rated business, why don't they have input? And I think we need to work on that as well as whether we have the ability to set hours or not set hours. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
We need a balance, as, uh, was stated before, and I said it at the last meeting as well, that we need to find a balance because we do want to be conducive to business and at the same time, we have to, as elected officials, take into account the people that live in that area. I believe that, uh, the time, putting a time on the car wash does make an attempt to find that balance. I think there needs to be a willingness to reach out to the community as well from Cumberland Farms, because even though you purchase the land and you're, you're setting up a business there, and I'm not comfortable at all with, uh, a government entity telling a private business how to run their company either. I, I just don't think that's conducive to business or, or anything. What we need to do though is at least take into account the, what's, you know, the people that live in that area. I think that's an important component to that. I'm willing to, I'm willing to agree with the resolution based on the fact that I believe this has already been done. It was already a compromise for, in New Bedford, for the people who were complaining about a car wash there. And I think that we could, we could duplicate that here. I think that this is the right, the right way to go, to, to take into consideration that we don't want to be too regulating and imposing on a private business, but also take into account, um, the, the, the needs of the community as well. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Actually, you owe my time, my, uh, my questions are already answered.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier. Counselor Pelletier?
I'm all set. Car wash, no, that's it.
Roll call.
Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President LeBeau.
Just out of sheer curiosity, how long did it take to process in New Bedford?
Uh, processing in New Bedford on the, um, Cushnet Avenue, uh, property took roughly the same length of time here. We had, because we had to go through the historic commission, that was, that was a residential, uh, two residences were there, they had to determine whether they were historic or not. And then once we got through that, then, then it was the normal development. But that was an added timeframe that isn't normal. And behind that particular development, there's a thirty-some-odd lot residential subdivision and there's a lot of homes on that side. On the front side, they're all businesses, so there was, and there was an intense traffic study there as well because of the, uh, signalization was not correct, even with the existing signals there. The city hadn't really gotten around to making it work, so they had traffic problems which we solved.
And was there public input during that process?
City of New Bedford, um, site plan review is public, okay? But you have different regulations here, but.
So I absolutely agree with Counselor Pereira, we talked about this at the last meeting. Had we, had there been a public input during this review, it wouldn't have got to here at the last meeting with an hour of talk, it wouldn't have gotten sent to regulations with however long that was, and we wouldn't be having this conversation against night. So if Counsel Pereira wants to put in that resolution to change the site plan review, I'd be happy to, uh, co-sponsor her, uh, co-sponsor that with her and, um, hopefully this doesn't happen again for the next business that wants to come in. And the residents still are heard and all of their, um, concerns and questions are answered, and it doesn't end up here holding up a gas tank, what's just before us for, for gas tanks with every question under the sun that should have already been handled. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Uh, the motion that is before us is to adopt with an amendment that the city council put a limitation on the operation of the car wash for the hours of, to be used only between five AM and ten PM. Hearing that correctly?
Correct.
Roll call.
Counselor Skadine?
No.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
No.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
No. Motion carries? Motion carries, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business.
That was just on the amend, that was, that was just on the amendment, right?
That was just, look, that was, yeah, that was on the amendment, that is correct. So we need a motion to adopt as amended. It would be appropriate. We voted on the amendment.
Motion to adopt as amendment amended.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Roll call.
Counselor Skadine?
No.
Dion?
No. No.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
No.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
No. Motion carries.
Committee on Finance at a meeting held on February 11th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying loan order be referred to the full council for action. This is the loan order in the amount of $2.1 million for the purchase of Snowy.
To adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
On adoption of the loan order, Counselors Kadeen?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
The Committee on Finance at a meeting held on February 11th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying loan order be referred to the full council for action. This is the loan order in the amount of $2,219,000 for street repair.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call.
On adoption of the loan order, Counselors Kadeen?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaBee LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Whereas the risks of firefighters being diagnosed with cancer are 9% higher for the general population, whereas the risk of firefighters dying from cancer are 14% higher than the general population. Whereas the fire department has lost two active firefighters in the past seven years to occupational cancer at the ages of 32 and 37. Whereas there are currently two active firefighters that were diagnosed with, and treated for occupational cancer. Whereas we should do our best to offer cancer prevention screening and testing to our fire department employees. Now therefore be reviled that the administration offer all current firefighters the opportunity to sign up for the firefighter cancer screening trial through cancer drugs incorporated at a cost of $30 per person, and be a further result that the administration pay for these screenings through the general fund and not out of the FY '20 fire department budget as limits have already been marked for other purchases through zero-based budgeting.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Dion, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion, the sponsor of the resolution. Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Thank you. Just two things. Madam Clerk, the email about the firefighter cancer screening trial, can you attach that information when it goes to the administration?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And the other, the point I wanted to make is the reason that I asked for it not to be taken out of their department. I know sometimes they say, well, we can, they can pay for it out of there, and then we can, you know, make it whole if they need to use it for something else. My hesitation there is that last year, when we were talking about the active shooter gear, it was taken out of each of the department EMS, police, and fire departments, their line items for gear. And they were then hesitant, those departments, to then spend down that line item or, or spend more than that line item, not knowing if it was going to be allowed or not. So, they were hesitant to purchase things that they had earmarked that money for. I don't want to see that happen here. So, it's a very small amount. I hope that the administration will accept it 100% and as quickly as possible. And if they have any questions, they are, are welcome to reach out to myself. They could reach out to the Union President, Jason Burns, for more information. But I hope that this is a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat six, Councilor Peckham.
To speak on the topic, I, I've also spoken to Mr. Burns in the past regarding the cancer situation, obviously. And to show you how overwhelming it is, there's two firefighters that have returned now after battling cancer. There was three on the same truck at the same station fighting cancer, okay? That's astronomical. That's, think of where you work, and can you imagine three people in the same office all diagnosed with cancer, working in the same environment together at the same time? It's absolutely crazy. Things like this are going to stop that. The early prevent, the, the early detection, being able to help the people that help us and make sure, as Mr. Burns mentioned earlier, we had to light Government Center up green yesterday in memory of a fallen firefighter. These early detection systems can hopefully make it so we never have to light this building up again. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor in seat five, Councilor Lee.
No, you can't put a price tag on safety anyway at this point. Earlier when Mr. Burns was doing the citizens' input, we talked also about how preventative maintenance can be a better cost at the taxpayers dying. But it's bigger than that, that we actually show as a, as a city that we care about these firefighters and that we're doing everything we can to make sure that they're safe regardless of how much it costs. So, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. There is a motion to adopt that has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas the city council unanimously adopted a home rule petition on May 28, 2019, and act authorizing employees of the city of Fall River the ability to apply with the Fall River Retirement Board purchase credible service, military service. And whereas the mayor approved the petition and signed it on May 29, 2019, and whereas Senator Michael Rogers filed the bill on June 17, 2019 with the Committee on Public Services, and it was heard on June 25, 2019, whereas the House and Senate extended the reporting date until April 22, 2020, as they are also deliberating a companion bill submitted by PERACT. Now therefore be resolved, the city council and the citizens' joint letter to our state delegation requesting that they do everything within their power to see that either bill moves as quickly as possible to passage and implementation.
To adopt. Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion, the council that sponsored the resolution. Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President LeBeau.
As I said earlier, I had spoken to the Union President that had brought this before us, which originally the fire department. We then amended it to be all city employees with veteran service. Spoke to Senator Rogers, and you can actually follow the, all of the bills online, see where they're at, see where, you know where they're going. And my concern is that the PERACT bill might sit there as well. It will be coming up on, you know, we're a little bit shy of a year now, and we're going to have employees that this is going to affect. So, if we could send that letter, if we could ask the administration to jointly send that letter, I would appreciate that. That I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Motion to adopt. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Anything else, Madam Clerk, besides a brief recess?
No.
Just a brief recess.
Brief recess, and you have something?
Yeah. Mr. President, before we go to brief recess, can, can we give a standing invitation to Corporation Council to be at our, our meetings? There were, there were a couple of discussions here that I think he would have been able to kind of shed some light on. So, it would be nice to have him with the administration down here at our council meetings.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, for the record, let's make sure that all the city council meetings that we have, that we invite Corporation Council to be here. There were a number of items before us tonight that we could have used some input on. Thank you. Brief recess. For the city council meeting, will now be called back to order, Madam Clerk.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adopt.
Oh.
Miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage to the final.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
By Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Kadeen. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn has been made by Councilor Kadeen, seconded by Councilor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good night.